All right, it's nine. Good morning.
Good morning.
Welcome, everyone. Thank you so much for coming out. It's August 17th. It is 9:00 a.m. I am going to call this meeting to order. Thank you all for joining us. We're going to start out with our invocation and our pledge allegiance to the flag by our city attorney, Tom Trast. Please rise.
We pray that you always satisfy the needs that need to be met during this meeting, strengthen us as we make tough decisions, guide us to be effective and decisive so that this meeting will be productive. In this week, pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to start out by thanking city staff for the donuts and the coffee to get us started this morning. All right, we're going to start out with our open forum. Each speaker will be recognized once and limited to a five-minute comment on any subject that is not on the agenda. The open forum will conclude at 9:30 a.m. If you wish to speak, please state your name and address for the record. If you would like to speak, please fill out one of these comment cards. They are in the back of the council chambers. I will proceed with the order collected. If you do not fill out a speaker card, you still will have an opportunity to speak. Let's get started. I am going to start the public meeting with Jenna Vogel. Come on up. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Good morning, councilman and mayor. So, we're here, obviously, about the development. And a lot of the neighbors that I have, I live right on Dartmouth over here. And the two plans, they're nice in theory. I think we'd like to merge them together. But the community has more concern about, I guess, pre-questions before we get to development. We're concerned about the road infrastructure. How are we going to control the traffic? How are we going to control the speeders? The speeding on Dartmouth itself is crazy. The stop signs don't do anything. They just bypass them at all hours of the night. So if we're increasing this area, and especially down to Park, with one of the developers proposing even a larger sidewalk all the way down to kind of tie into RE Olds, you're going to have a lot of traffic. You're going to have a lot of speeding. And so we're concerned about what is going to be there to protect our neighborhood and the infrastructure that way. We also have been having a really large issue with our electric power being intermittent. It's probably, this summer, it's probably gone out almost once or twice a day. And all of our appliances are really taking a toll. It comes back pretty quickly, but sometimes it takes a little bit. Our power structure is not able to control currently what we have. So if we're adding this development, what's the plan for the power? We also have concerns with, obviously, drainage. None of the developers really addressed that. I think there was one that had a retention pond. It was very small. Clearly, if we're taking away all that greenage and our draining, we need area for drainage. And we can't just have that area taken up and the drainage put on the community because we already are having issues. Our ditches are not dug out regularly. I had a call to have mine dredged just to get to the pipes, but none of the other neighbors had it done. And so, you know, these last storms, the water's flowing over, and it takes a while to drain down. Another concern, I think largely, is how are we going to bring in the proper stores to this commercial building on that first level? We haven't been able to do it on State Street. It's very empty. We only have standard offices that bring in their own clientele, and we're not drawing in people. So when I said I'd like to mold the two developments together, one is great. You're pulling it in from Tempe Street. We got great roadage out there, and it looks appealing to them. But then you're leaving our community with a blank wall with nothing but windows because we get the back of the building. Then the other is great. It draws in the community from the immediate city, but you have that blank wall on Tempe Street. How are you ever going to draw in enough business to keep the commercial alive? And that's been our biggest problem. We haven't been able to draw in business to keep any of the things that have tried to survive on State Street. So I think, large part, the community, and I've heard a lot of neighbors talk, it's not so much that we necessarily don't like the developments. I mean, they need growth. Our concern is, how are we going to actually bring in the business that's not going to just leave that commercial building desolate? How are we going to support our infrastructure, electricity, water, maintenance of the roads, police bringing in? We want to hear those things before we can actually be comfortable to explore more and help develop these plans, and whichever one gets selected to being best fit for our community.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jenna.
Next is David Llewellyn.
Good morning.
Morning, David.
After looking at both plans, I think we can all agree that the largest consideration besides infrastructure is parking. We have a presentation that has a raised lot. We have two levels of parking. And we have another that has five acres of asphalt. If I was voting one, two, or three, I'd vote for three and just keep it as a park. Because at least we can make that inviting to the public. Even if we had to just put a small retail building, we could have something that we could want to go to, something that we would want to take our kids to. When I look at the plans and I see that we're walking down State Street, and there's a five-story building on one side, and there's a five-story building on the other side, and we have some trees, there's nothing inviting about this. There's nothing open about it. My recollection, and going to all of the earlier meetings that we had, is that we were looking for something that would bring the public in, that you might go to a coffee shop and get your coffee and your Danish, and walk over to the park and sit down, and maybe watch the kids play and run around, or whatever. But what happened? Where did it go? There's got to be something that we, the city, can do besides requiring 300 or 350 parking spaces. Everywhere you go, except maybe a week before Christmas, you know that we have tons and tons of parking that never gets used. And I dare say that the city has plenty of parking already out there. And we're going to build all of this parking instead of beautiful grass and plants and benches and a jungle gym for the kids. All we're going to have is a great big parking lot after all of this work. And I would actually hope that after this session, that the developers, who I know did a lot of work just to get here, be allowed to go back and revise their proposal and bring a final proposal to you to vote yes or no. We've got to move forward, but we have to move forward with quality for the residents. And I don't think that we got there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Sean.
Sean Swager, 601 Spruce Street, Oldsmar. Good morning.
Morning, Sean.
Councilman Mayor. Fancy seeing you here on a morning Saturday. I'll be brief. I first want to just commend the city for the proposals and the open house session, the scoring criteria, everything that's been done in a presentation manner to increase transparency. Because a few years ago, when there were some options on the table, it was a little different. And I just wanted to say thank you for what's been done to, you know, give us as residents more visibility and, you know, information. So with that being said, I'll be, again, brief. I think we can all, we all have some things that we like and some things that we don't. I myself, you know, I'm looking for, just from a real estate perspective, I think there needs to be a, like, an attraction, or, you know, I've talked about many times, a graduate-level university, like campus. So I think the Stanbury layout has that with the, you know, standalone building. Because, again, like, as some of the comments were, there's not, to me, there's not enough community space. There's not enough reason for citizens, residents, to go downtown, right? I know they both have some small green space, but I think there just needs to be more for us. But also, at the same time, we're probably on, like, step three of 30. So that's just my general question, and I know it's not Q and A right now, but if you guys decide to rank one over the other, can the elements be changed, right? That's my question. Because I don't, that's just where I'm at. I think we all want some changes. And I think the perception is, you guys are picking one or the other today, and we're fixed with that. So I just wanted to kind of ask that. I know you can't answer me, but but thank you very much.
Thank you, Sean. Next is Priscilla Murphy. Priscilla? Okay. Well, thank you very much for coming out. Next is TJ Murphy.
Hello, I'm TJ Murphy. I live 301 Fairfield Street in Oldsmar. I'm not feeling well today, so just kind of bear with me. Standing is an issue. I've only lived here 40 years. I came to Oldsmar because of its eclecticness, and it wasn't, you know, you could just do basically whatever you wanted to. You don't have homeowners associations and all that. Could wash my car in the front yard, and I'd have some neighbor complaining. You know, I'm all about change. I never got involved with the community much, you know, because I've been working. But then after I retired, when all this came down, I decided to go door-to-door in Oldsmar, you know, from St. Pete Drive to, you know, all the way to Oldsmar Elementary, because that's us. We're the original Oldsmar. And, you know, pretty much, I don't know anybody who's against developing that property and wants to, you know, have, you know, have this going on. It's just how we want it and how it's going to affect us. Right now, I'm in charge of the walking the kids to school over to Oldsmar Elementary. And so every day, we have, not in my group, but at least 50, 60 families are on their bikes. They get their kids on their little seats in the back of their bikes, and their little six- and seven-year-olds are on their bikes. And because our sidewalks are so crappy, I mean, it's like, you know, these little kids can't negotiate it because they're up and down, there's pieces missing, there's bushes hanging over. A lot of times, they're forced into the streets. And right now, before this development ever happens, okay, we have so many cars going down Dartmouth that it's ridiculous. I must have 50, 60 cars a day. It's becoming like a highway. And I heard the lady, first lady speak, she's right. They just ignore all the stop signs. So moving forward, if we do this, we need stop signs at everything, and God forbid, maybe Steve Jobs. I don't know, because what's going to happen, and this is my biggest fear, is nobody uses Washington to enter a four-lane superhighway. I never go out there. Does anybody go out there? You take your life in your hands. Because you've got two roads that everybody's hauling butt at 200 miles an hour to get to one lane. And they come shooting through there at 200 miles an hour, so it's nearly impossible to get out. Everybody uses, what, Safety Drive? Okay, I have to go through two, three cycles now to get out Safety Drive right now, sometimes to go left. Because everybody coming out of, you know, Whiskey Wings and all that stuff, and the light cycle's not long enough. We don't even have a turn light there. So what's going to happen when you add, you know, 250 condos and the 80 over by that I just found out about over by, does everybody know that? There's going to be 80 condos over by the library? Okay, where are those cars going to tell you? I tell you where they're going to go. Because people go to the least resistance, okay? They're going to get tired of waiting for that light. They're not going to be able to get out here. So they're going to come right down Dartmouth and the road over and St. Pete Drive. And all those cars are going to go at rush hour when I'm walking 50, 60 kids on bikes to school. Okay, my grandson's sitting in the back, these two little guys back there, both of them almost got killed this year. Look at me when I tell you that. You know what caused that? Because I came here months ago to tell you that people stopped blocking the sidewalks and stuff like that when we're walking. They walked out in the road and almost got hit. So you think that little girl that got killed over there on St. Pete Drive happened? It's going to happen. It's going to happen. Okay, so our quality of life has changed. We have to figure how to get this massive amount of people to exit this lake and not come through our neighborhood. And trying to get off, you know, 584, taking the right-hand turn in the complex, which most of us have to do, you're taking your life in your hand and getting rear-ended, okay? What is the holdup with creating a turn lane there? We don't have to wait for City Hall, and I realize that's a whole different issue with, you know, with roads and cities and stuff like. We need to press that. We need to get, the land is there. It's empty. Create a frickin' turn lane so we can get in here. Because when 300 people that live here want to come in, they're going to use that. And it's going to back up. People are going to get rear-ended. So we need to, we need to work on that, like, right now. And we don't have to wait for this to be built for two years to get these issues handled. That needs to be a priority. And somebody else that I just found out about, too, is, I don't know about the drain water issue. I haven't had a chance to check into it. But if you raise this up, okay, and all the water comes, where it's going to go? I live over here. It's going this way. Okay, I've been here, like I said. The only time we had major flooding problem was with Elena. Hurricane Elena, because she spun for three days, and the water got up into here, and it flooded the streets, only got in a couple of homes. This last little almost hurricane that we had, the water sat in my yard for six days. It had nowhere to go. And that was just 15 inches of rain. So you add all this, like I said, take this green space where it could be absorbed, the water's going to flow this way. It's going to flow toward the bay. And all of these older homes and stuff like that are all going to go underwater. And then we're going to have no option. We're going to come to you and say, oh, who's going to pay for that? I'm going to have to pay for that. Okay, so that's extremely important. So those are the things we have to press, is this traffic issue. And the last thing is, keep it eclectic. You know, we have space. Look at all that space. Nowhere in Palos County has space like that. So let's do something really, really, really cool. So you held those great meetings where we saw this. I liked some of this one. I liked some of that one. And all the people there weren't against any of this. They added really cool ideas. Where are the ideas? And then all of a sudden, we called this meeting, and I said it was going to be one or the other. Where are all those ideas that the people who live here affect their lives? Where are they in the plans if we can see them? And how do we hold the developers to do that? Okay, that's the question. So again, like I said, I canvassed this whole neighborhood. Nobody is against the development. We just have to do it the right way. And you guys make that call, okay? And you can make that call. And the last thing I'd like to say, you know, Oldsmar Flea Market is up for sale. They're going to do away with it sooner or later. Why the hell didn't we take all that stuff over there? You could put condos to the moon. There's nothing around it. And then, like, one of the guys said, create something really cool with parks and this and that, and water features, and little restaurants, and little bars. Something really cool. Now, I know that's not on the object, because we're moving so far. We spend millions of dollars trying to get this off the thing. But that's something we should have thought of years ago, years ago. You know, take all that crap away from us. And the infrastructure's already there. The roads are already there. The lights are already there. That's it. Just make good decisions for Oldsmar, okay? And most of the people here, I think, live in the old Oldsmar part that affects them. Because the people living on the outside, they don't give a crap. They don't have to deal with the traffic. They don't have to worry about their kids getting run over going to school, okay? So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, TJ. Appreciate you coming out. City clerk, do we have any more cards?
No.
Nope. Okay, is there anybody else that would like to be heard? Anybody else that would like to speak to the city council before I close the open forum? Anyone? All right. We're going to move on. Next on our agenda, Laura Smith from GAI Community Solutions Group will present and answer questions from the council. Welcome.
Thank you all, and good morning. I am Laura Smith with GAI's Community Solutions Group. We are the consultant firm that has been engaged in this process now with you all for a little over two years, I suppose. So we have prepared memorandum, which has been provided to you all. This basically outlines our observations related to the evaluation of the proposals that were received in response to the RFP. I do want to make sure that you understand, our memorandum does not offer scoring or scoring suggestions. As part of the conversations and work sessions that we've had in, you know, the many, many months leading up to now, we had decided that would be held squarely in the responsibility of council. So we have not offered you any recommendations on scoring. We have not offered any recommendation or indication of favor to either proposal. We have simply stated our observations. In addition, we've also provided you a summarized set of the public feedback that came from the open house as well as the online forum. In addition to, of course, you have access to all of those comment cards that were submitted, we simply attempted to summarize those into a more compact and absorbable way. We're, of course, here to answer any questions that you may have, but I do want to remind that in addition to the decision that you all made early on in the process to be the ones to individually score these proposals, you also, as part of a work session, you know, we collaboratively came up with the scoring matrix that you'll be using today. That was done during one of our workshops with you. Of course, that was voted on, and it was included in the package of materials that were distributed as part of the RFP solicitation. So that scoring matrix, of course, was part of this broader effort to really hone this RFP into the very transparent and public process that we've been going through for these last several months. So if there are any questions related to the information provided in our memorandum, I am more than happy to answer those for you today. Or if you have no questions, of course, we can move forward to talking a little bit about what the process is going to be for today before we get into presentations from the two respondents to the RFP.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions, Vice Mayor? No questions? Go ahead, councilmember now.
Just, Laura, thank you for being here today and all the work you've done up to this point. For the sake of, just for everybody that's here in the room, could you kind of give an overview of how you took the public comment from the open houses, that scoring that took place, and then ultimately the little table that you produced in your memorandum?
Absolutely. So what we did is, I personally read every single comment card. And I looked for terms that were replicatable. So, you know, if someone talked about there needing to be more green space, and somebody else talked about there needing to be more, you know, environmental areas or open areas where people can enjoy, I kind of clumped those together as similar requests. So I tried to summarize those, make them a little bit more streamlined for you so that you could just kind of go through and see that there were some commonalities. I will tell you, we excluded some feedback. There was some, I'll call it, interesting comments provided that would have been probably offensive to some. There was some rather strong language. So those comments, we did not provide, and we didn't summarize. Also, we, there were some that were just not responsive. They maybe had their name on the card, but then they didn't provide a scoring of how consistent they felt like it was with the vision and mission, or they just provided no feedback, or maybe there was just a big line drawn through it. So those were all things that were not really summarizable. We did go ahead and summarize the actual consistency scores that were provided. So those, of course, are shown there. And we then regrouped those into geographic proximity. So we provided you a summarized consistency score based on the proximity of the respondent to the site. So whether they live or own a business within one mile of the site, we're all grouped together and an average score provided. And then if they were more than one mile from the site, either as a resident or business owner, those were then averaged together, just so you could get a feel of the distinction between proximity. We also then grouped those by whether the feedback was received during the open house, where folks could actually come in and talk to the two proposers and ask questions. So they were getting a little bit more interaction, and they could get some clarification on things they didn't understand, which was, of course, different than the online platform, where they had access to the RFP documents, but they could not directly engage with the two firms and their teams. So that's why those were then broken out into separate groups, but you also got an overall average.
Cool. Thank you for that explanation.
Absolutely.
Councilor Gannon?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. In the memorandum, which, thank you for the detailed analysis of the of the different proposals, can you talk a little bit about how today is, to me, a little bit more about picking a developer as opposed to picking a picture? Because in my review of your memorandum, it appeared that the goal, as we continue along this process, as I understood it, as we're coming in today and as we continue forth, because we have, you know, our 17 steps and whatnot, was more about seeing how each developer interpreted our request, our vision, our mission, and the experiences that the community put together for, you know, character, livability, you know, the different things that people wanted to see. Can you detail a little bit how, in general, and specific to this project, the basic pictures that we have in front of us evolve once we get into the deeper discussion with a ranked developer?
Absolutely. So, and you'll see this sort of reiterated in our memo several times, especially as we're talking about the plans themselves, the site concepts that were provided. These are conceptual drawings, right? These have not been fully engineered. That's a process that's to come. That's why staff even offered you a preliminary review, because they can only review so much, because these are conceptual plans. There's some things that, you know, have been questioned in terms of consistency with code or compliance. There are things that are going to have to continue as part of the ongoing review process. These plans are just that, conceptual. There are going to need to be changes to them. They will evolve over the coming months. Now, the degree of those changes will be different, because some may be more compliant than others. Some may have the ability to become more compliant more easily. And there are components and factors there. And we've outlined some of those issues that may result in, you know, some of the buildings being reoriented or reconfigured on the site to be more or less in one view area versus another. There were also some questions about the on-street conditions, entrances, exits, things like that. Those are just some things that we observed as potentially resulting in revision or modification of these plans. But these are, again, conceptual. When they actually start through the development review process, of course, as you're probably all very familiar, they need to actually submit their drawings to the city. Those will be full-site plans. So that's going to detail things like where the stormwater is going, if they're going to be grading the land, what kind of grade changes are going to have to be made. All of that will be documented within the site plans. So what they've done now is essentially taken the area that they have to deal with, and based on the information that's readily available to them, created a concept that they feel like is something that's workable on that site. So yes, I agree with your explanation that these are their interpretations of the vision and the mission, but they are by no means a final product. And so you should really keep that in mind, that this is a jumping-off point, and the intent here is more to look at the response as this is how they interpret the vision, or what they think is most appropriate in Oldsmar, and how they think they're, you know, that this is a workable program for them. And that's what they're presenting to you, is that this program works for them. This is a pro forma that works for them. These are the types of units, the type of space, and a layout and general configuration that they can make work from a pro forma perspective. So you really need to think about it from that perspective, that these are conceptual. And concepts are going to change, and what we see today may be very similar or less similar to what the final end product is, though it will probably still be largely the same concept in terms of, you know, general
Feel.
Yeah, like, the amount of units might shift a little higher, a little lower. The amount of square footage, the amount of parking, those are things that you may see change, which are going to result in other configuration shifts. And, and things like landscaping that are shown, those are being shown at the moment, conceptually, almost as part of the architectural feel of the site. Those will be refined more as they get into full-site plans, where you're gonna start seeing that really much more granularly detailed, especially at the different frontages, because you do have this sort of pie-shaped property almost. So, you're gonna have different architectural treatments and different landscape treatments on all of those frontages to make sure that you've got visibility and all of those other factors covered.
Thank you. Anything else, Councilmember Gannon?
Yeah.
Go ahead, keep going.
Thank you. I'm, I don't know if you know, but, so the public knows, all of those comment cards were made available in their original format to the council. So, we saw the actual, you know, blue and yellow cards and the writing and all that stuff. I know what you're talking about, about the vulgar comment, you know, sometimes something, something like, you know, "This sucks," or, you know, "Hate it all." It doesn't give us anything, like, "What about it do you not like?" So, I understand why some of that wouldn't necessarily be helpful. But one thing that I noticed in the cards for either OAG, or Sandbury, or just comments in general, even though the visions submitted were very different, a lot of the comments were the same. And I thought that was very interesting. And I also thought it was interesting that in the question, "What would you like to see more of," or "What would you add or include," regardless of the proposal, people tended to indicate the same things. Is that your overall feel? Because I know you provided the, the numeric scores, and you listed the comments, but the analysis or the word count of how many times people mentioned the same thing wasn't necessarily included.
Yeah, I thought about doing a word cloud.
Yeah.
And it was all over. But I will say, yes. We saw a lot of the same, more green space, more community-activated space, more shade. More shade was, that was a huge one. Shade trees, shade structures, anything to, you know, make areas more shaded. We live in Florida, you all know what it feels like to be, and this time of year is a great time to be thinking about any type of large-scale development like this, because you're already thinking that. Man, I wouldn't walk through there. I'm gonna, I'm gonna be sunburned. You know, that's the kind of thing that, this is a great time of year to even be thinking about it, because, of course, it's August, our hottest month of the year usually. And so, we're really all, already in that mindset of, "We need more shade out there." So, I think that was one of the very repeated comments. We also saw stuff about, you know, making some of the amenities fully open to the public. Some of the plan, the plans are obviously different in that regard as to whether the amenities are fully publicly accessible, or if they're accessible specifically to the residents. So, that was not always clear to the folks, the, the public at those meetings. And when they saw the plans, they weren't really sure. So, I think that kind of comment popped up as well a good bit. We did see also a lot about watering stations for both dogs and humans.
Yes, yes.
And I thought that was so cute, because we did see a lot of that of, "Hey, it, it does seem pretty pet-friendly. Let's make sure that there's watering stations for people and pets." And I just thought that was so, I'm like, "Yeah, people need water, too. We forget about that." But those were, those were good feedback. We saw outdoor dining, wanting to really establish outdoor seating areas that weren't necessarily associated with a restaurant, so that then if there were a coffee shop and you wanted to go grab a cup of coffee and then go have somewhere to sit and read a paper, where you're not actually being served, like cafe tables being made available in areas where people can just go and kind of mix and mingle and have a place to be leisurely and sort of linger without feeling like they have to be part of a restaurant operation. So, we saw that type of feedback. There were some questions about, of course, ingress egress, that either there were too many access points to the site, or too few access points to the site. Again, I think these are things that are conceptual. They're being shown to you as, as a current envisionment of how traffic will move through the site. But, of course, if there's changes to how the parking is laid out, or how the buildings are configured, those ingress egress points are also going to evolve with that to make it a fully functioning site where you can easily enter and exit the property. But I do think green space, community space, pet-friendly, walkable was actually something we heard a lot in terms of likes, that people did feel like it was very walkable on both proposals. I think that's because there is a lot of presence on State Street and Washington Street for both proposals that really kind of engage those sidewalks. So, yeah, there, there was a lot of similarity in the comments received, even though the proposals are, they're different. They certainly approach it differently. But, um, the, I think the feedback just shows you the, the things that people take the most value in when they're going to be in one of these types of spaces.
I also noticed that the comment cards for both proposals, and some of the comments that were brought up this morning by folks who spoke this morning, people have concerns about things like concurrency, traffic, mobility studies, stormwater studies, things like that, to, to see how a development would affect them in, in a very concrete way as opposed to, you know, an aesthetic way. I know that you have a lot of information, and you know our 17-step process, but can you talk about why some of those things are not necessarily addressed right now as far as a timing perspective as opposed to later?
So, keeping in mind that this is a solicitation process. So, in theory, today, by the end of this special meeting, you all will have scored, and we will have, you know, two fully scored proposals, and one of those will be scored higher than the other. If, if the day goes as planned, that is how we will end this day. So, in that situation, if we had asked them both to go to that level of detail, that would have been an extraordinary effort on their part. So, you're asking these folks to then expend an enormous amount of time and resources going through the process of at least preliminarily engineering the site and finding out what the stormwater capacity is and determining how that stormwater is going to move and flow. I'm not a civil engineer, but I do know that takes time and effort. And we're asking them to be conceptual at this moment, knowing that those issues still have to be addressed and dealt with. And they know that when they're building out their concept, that we're still gonna have to think about, you know, where is our stormwater outfall gonna be? Where are we going, you know, where are the different areas that that's all going to go? How much are we gonna be able to manage through one location versus another? They're factoring some of this stuff in conceptually when they're laying their site out. But until they get to that point where they have fully engineered those things and done their stu, traffic studies, done their soil samples to understand how much is going to or not going to percolate on that site, I mean, there's so much still to be done on the technical side of developing this plan into something that is both compliant with all of your land development regulations, but also the state regulations and building codes that all go along with developing a site like this. So, that is all to come. It's not that just because it's not shown doesn't mean it's not important, or not being considered, or not being thought of. It's just not at this stage. We are still in the concept stage. Next stage, once that you select one of these proposals to move forward in terms of actually with the team you're gonna select to go forward with, they're gonna go back to the drawing board with all of that, because now they are saying, "Okay, well, we know we are gonna develop this site. Now, we can expend those valuable time and resources to developing this fully functioning plan based on all of these other factors to consider, including things like traffic, environmental, stormwater." You know, all of that has to come into play, but it would have been extremely burdensome to ask that be done prior to them submitting a proposal.
On, um, the, the city staff put together sort of just a.
That's a good point. Sorry, he just mentioned even that the pro formas even suggest that they've budgeted for all of that to be done as part of their site development process, because they budget for engineering and all of the actual design and.
Yeah, that's true.
Those components as well within the budgetary pro formas that they presented for each of their projects.
So, I know city staff did a sort of a broad stroke, just general, hey, heads up, just so you know, you know, this isn't necessarily our parking requirements, or, you know, you, you might have to change the orientation or step back this. Just some general feedback about basic changes that we already know would have to be made, because as each of those have been submitted, we literally could not approve either one, because.
Just as shown, no.
Yeah, none, none, nothing that is in a picture today could be approved, even after, even if it went through all that stuff. But you mentioned something about environmental and, and stuff like that, but in addition to architectural concerns, volumetric concerns about what goes there, there are also, you said, building codes, there's also environmental things. We can't approve something as a council that violates Florida law, anything as, as far as impervious, impervious surface ratio for, you know, where stormwater goes. And I think we did some preliminary analysis maybe a year or two ago about, just to ensure that doing a development like this, we do have the capacity at schools, we do have the capacity at the wastewater treatment plant. We did some of that already, but we would do that again, right?
Yes. You would need to do all of that stuff formally. It was done preliminarily before we started this process several years ago, but those things change.
Right.
Right? So, other stuff's been built in that time period.
Sure.
More kids have enrolled in those schools in that time period. I see you guys have quite a few single-family homes under construction, and some even duplex and quadplex-type product going in, in and around the downtown. So, I'm sure that your schools are now heavier on student load than they were a couple of years ago when we preliminarily looked at those things. So, those will all need to be formalized and finalized as part of that application process. Neither of these folks have submitted for, you know, capacity reservation or anything like that, which they will need to do as part of their review process.
So, when we, and, I know you remember that I had, we had a bit of a back and forth with the scoring criteria and what was most important. I, I am here today to tell you, you were right. Yes. You were right about.
Hey, I always enjoy our banter.
The, I know, I know, I can be a little bit difficult sometimes. It's, of course, incumbent upon me to be difficult sometimes, because, you know, we have, we have very real concerns, but as a council, and of course, on behalf of our citizens. But one of the things that jumps out at me for all of the things that you just mentioned, the, the concurrency testing, the, the compliance with the code, the, the ability to develop those engineering site plans, the ability to address those concerns seem to fall under the blue, the technical, which is where we're considering the experience of the developer and their past projects, and their ability to go down that path with us. And, you know, in, in a timely manner, in a competent manner, in a manner that I'm assuming would be financially feasible for them. But, you know, we had a proposal, gosh, 15 years ago, where it was kinda like, "Oh, yeah, we could, we could do that. We could get a permit for that." And I was like, "Um, n, n, no, this is, this is very important work." So, I wanted to, um, I wanted to let you know that I, I now understand why there was a certain weighted focus on the technical ability of the developer. So, I think that that's gonna be very important to make sure that we meet a lot of the concerns of the residents.
Yes, absolutely. And I, I think it's important to remember, this almost is a partnership. This is, you went through a solicitation process. This is property that the city owns. And you're basically working with this developer to develop that site. This isn't a true public-private partnership. It doesn't meet those criteria. But you are partnering with a private developer to bring something to the city that, you know, is consistent with the vision, mission, not only for the site, but consistent with the overall outlook for the future of Oldsmar and, and your downtown.
I think those are all the questions that I have.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So, I wanna just start out by just thanking you and Owen for all your hard work over the last two years as, as, as being mayor. You guys have done an excellent job, especially just now explaining to the public exactly how the process is gonna go next, and where we're headed as a council. I also wanna thank the city staff for all your hard work with the open houses and bringing the public together with the public media, the Facebook posts, all the social media, sending out the information so that the public knows that we had these three open houses. I just wanna thank city staff. As far as questions go, I think Councilmember Gannon and the others, and Andrew Knapp, you answered everything. So, is it okay if we move on to the next step? Or do you have anything else you wanna cover?
Um, if there's no more questions, I was, sorry.
Yeah.
Yes, Councilmember Knapp.
Just one thing, maybe, to kinda button it up in terms of this section of what we've done. So, if you take the element of the uniqueness of this being a project that's basically public, the acquisition of public lands, just the grand scheme, the big picture of a development project, because other than the two teams of people here, most, if not all, the rest of us are not developers. This is not an abnormal process of concept, design, development, like going from big picture, unrefined, to sharpening your pencils and ultimately saying, "Yes, this is the right plan and project to move forward with." Is that correct?
That is very correct. This is not an unusual process. If anything, what has been so great about y'all's choice in this process is you have kept it very, very transparent. I have not seen an open house like that done before for a project like this, where, you know, keep in mind, we did a similar sort of almost charrette two years ago over in the ballroom at the hotel across the street, where we were literally asking folks, "Come in, tell us what the vision is. Tell us how to create the mission for this site." Which we did. We went through that process, right? We, we had lots of people at those meetings. We had them doing exercises on boards to show us what they did and didn't like to come up with the vision and the mission, and come up with that list of things that we heard were important. So, all of this is a product of this two-year effort to really make that site something that the public has told us, "These are the types of things we want, and the types of uses that we wanna see, and a place that we want to come and be." And so, through that whole process, you guys have kept it very open and very transparent and very publicly connected. And that is something that I think you all deserve to be commended for, because that is not a task that anyone takes on lightly, but also, a lot of folks would, would struggle with that, because it, it dragged the process a little longer. It extended our timeline, right? But ultimately, I think it really did allow for this to be something that everyone can feel a part of. And whenever it starts coming out of the ground, whatever it looks like in its final form, they'll be able to point to and say, "See, those are the kind of things we wanted. And that's something I like, and that's something I like." Everyone will never be made happy by everything, but they will certainly see pieces of it that start to remind them of how we got here.
Thank you for explaining that. That's exactly what I was trying to say, but your words were so much better.
Thank you.
And again, this is the first step. Please remember, everyone, even if you're watching, the million viewers we have on YouTube right now, this is just the first step of council. We are gonna work together with city staff and Laura and Owen, and we're gonna get this process going. Anything else?
Yes, the, the next thing is how we're gonna move forward today. So, it's our suggestion that you all score each proposal after you do the Q and A after their presentation. So, each of the respondents are going to come up. You're gonna give them 30 minutes to do a presentation of their proposal. And then you're gonna engage in a question-and-answer session where you can ask them questions, and they'll be able to respond. Once that that Q and A is done for each proposal, it's our suggestion that you go ahead and score that proposal at that time, so that you're scoring with that information fresh in your mind. And then you'll turn those score sheets in, and then we'll move on to the next presenter to present their proposal, do the question and answer, and then you would go ahead and score that right away at that time. So, that's our suggestion for your next step in terms of structure of all of this today. Let's see. But no, that's all I've got.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, Laura.
I am humbled and honored. We have representatives here from Office America Group. They will present a 30-minute presentation. Please come forward and give your presentation. You have the floor. Welcome. Thank you coming to Oldsmar.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, everybody, for coming today, a lot of people today as well. Our company name is Office America Group. Can you pass to the next slide, or is here? Okay. Okay. So, we changed a little bit the, the scoring criteria here to present today. We are gonna talk first about ourselves, because I think, as, as was mentioned before, it's a very important part of the presentation, and for the people to know who we are. And then we're gonna talk about the project that we presented. It should be mentioned to everybody that we didn't change anything in the project, because it was not permitted by the RFP. So, we heard the comments, we read the comments, we know what we're gonna do next, but we didn't do any changes now, because it was not permitted by the RFP. So, that is for everybody to know. Okay. Office America Group is a Florida-based real estate development company specializing in the development of retail, office, residential, and lately, mixed-use projects, like we're gonna see in more detail in the next slide. You can see here some of the completed projects that we have done in the past 10 years. We have office, retail, here, residential. We have office, retail, here, residential. My name is Ricardo Hernandez. I am the founder and CEO of Office America Group. I have more than 30 years of experience doing real estate. My background is as an architect originally. I worked for 10 years designing projects, so I know the vision and how to do it. Then I worked 10 years in the, in the, with a lender doing financing, so I know what the lenders look in a project like this to lend the money. And then in the last 10 years, I've been doing developments here in Florida. And my two partners, they are here, they're going to talk later. Isaac, 12 years working here in Florida. He's focused right now in central Florida, Orlando. He's going to present some of our projects. And Reynaldo, he's a civil engineer. He's on charge of the construction part. When we get to construction, he's, he's the guy to contact over there. So we're going to talk about the recent projects. Isaac, if you can come, please.
Hello. Good morning. Very excited to be here in Oldsmar to present our vision of what we can work together. We heard what everybody's saying before going to present something that we're doing. I heard a lot about having a lot of parking space. This is just complying with the code. Obviously, if there's something we can do about reducing some of the parking spaces and increasing the green spaces, it's something that we will, will be more than happy and excited to do. There is other ideas that we have heard, and like Ricardo said, that we cannot change it now, that we can improve in our next design, taking in consideration that we have to comply with code and with everything that, that, the requirement in the civil part, the infrastructure that goes, so there is no flooding, like the gentleman says. Obviously, all these, all these projects are done in a way that are capable of withhold even a 100-year storm, because that's the way you have to build these days in Florida. So being said that, I'm going to continue by explaining one of these projects that we're doing in central Florida. This, this land was purchased like six years ago, five, six years ago. It's a 40, 46 acres. 48 acres. 48 acres that we bought in, in central Florida. I think it's under two hours away from here. This is close to the Millennium Mall, a couple of miles from the Millennium Mall, a couple of miles close to the Epic Center, the new, the new Universal project. It contains eight buildings of 120 units each. As you see, we have a retention pond in the middle. That was a huge civil work. It took us over two years to do the mass grading, mass grading and all the infrastructure for that, to be able to withhold all the, all the rain, all the, all the water that comes, the stormwater, so there is no flooding in our site or around our site. It holds everything. It contains a lot of amenities, a lot of green spaces. It has a couple of pickable cords, something that is not in this project per se. There is no pickable, something that we have been talking about. It's maybe creating a couple of pickable cords, something that a lot of people like these days. I particularly play paddleball, that is a little bit different. But, you know, you can have a couple of pickable cords with some shades on the side, with a juice bar. Again, hearing something that I think the city will be interested in. This project is halfway through. The first phase will be completed by the end of the year. This is how it's going. This is, this is a picture already last month. It's a little more far along the way. This project is another 18 acres in central Florida. I am very proud of this project. We're very proud of this project. It's 18 acres, 200 units. This is how it's looking today. It's 200 units, 40 townhomes on the sides, and then you have a commercial part in the front. I consider this project to be a landmark of the area. It's in front of a Sunrail station called Sunlake Station. It takes you from, from Orange Avenue all the way to downtown and all the way to Pensiana. It's a mixed-use. In the front, you have the commercial. In the back, you have, in the middle, you have the, the buildings of 200 units and then the 40 townhomes. People in the area, in the neighborhood are very excited about us completing it and start moving in there. It's a huge need that the, that the community needed it. This one is a project completed a few years ago. It's also a mixed-use of, the whole, the whole area was 10 acres. The story behind this, I was driving on Sunlake Road and we saw this piece of land. We bought it. We went to city committees again. We changed the zoning. It was the only commercial zoning. We changed it to residential and mixed-use. Today, you have a shopping center with offices in the second floor. We were so excited about the location of the project, and you have the buildings on the back, 120 units, and then the other building that is 60 units with a, with a pond. Let me go back on that one. This one is, has probably the same amount of cars that we have here, like 50,000 to 60,000 cars passing by. The second story, there are offices. We saw a huge opportunity to build some nice offices there. So we also created a brand called The Works, which is an executive offices. We're close to 100% occupied, and we're providing a service that was needed for, for the city, for the area, and for the community. And that's a point that I want to make, that the idea of us being here is to build something that is like, like you said, it's a partnership of together, that we're going to build something that, that most of us are going to be happy and satisfied of building something that is needed. We're not here to impose or to build something that, that, that people don't like or that people don't need. We're here to work together, to build something that we all agree that is going to be a successful partnership for all the parts involved. Thank you.
And this project is the last one that we are going to present, because we were capped to four projects in the RFP. This is the, this is a, this is an RFP that we had with a, with a Palm Beach County City called Lake Worth Beach. It started in 2020. It's a 3.5. We were, you know, we were in the same position as today in 2020, competing with other groups, and we won the opportunity to develop this project. And we, we acquired 3.5 acres. We're doing 125 units with 8,000 square feet of retail. It's going to be completed next year, and this is the current status of the, of the project. The community is very happy. We are, we are in a stage right now, bringing commercial tenants to the space, because we're going to be completed in, at the beginning of next year. And this is the, this is a picture that we took, I think, last month, is this picture. One of the parts of the, of the RFP was to present what is our structure that we use to develop these projects. It's very simple. We use a single entity company that we created here in Florida. Then we have partners in the equity side, and we have a lot of lenders because of my contacts when I was a lender. So I was able to get a lot of contacts, and they are right now investing in our projects. And then the management, we do it, some of the projects, we do it in-house, and some of the projects, we partner with local management companies to, to manage the properties. Then I'm going to introduce the rest of the team. They are different companies that are than us, but they have, we have been working together in the last 60 years. I'm going to introduce the Architect, the Martin Architectural Group. Annabella is here. She's responsible of the, of the, of the Florida office.
Well, good morning. It is a pleasure to be here again, and I truly enjoy being here. I thank you for the opportunity. My name is Annabella Garcia. I'm with the Martin Architectural Group. Martin has been established since 1957. It's over 55 years of experience that we bring alone. The South Florida office has been established since 1972, and I have been with the firm for the past 26 years, performing work just in the state of Florida. Currently, right now, we're over 28 active projects in different cities. We have projects in the city of Quincy, Amocley, Lake Worth Beach, Delray, Delray, Stewart, Port San Lucy. We have a project in Daytona, Palm Bay. We have three active projects right now, multifamily, most of them, and mixed-use. We do a lot of work for the home builders, too. We do a lot of work for Toll Brothers. We're right now doing a couple of communities for Polte. We do a lot of work from Delray all the way to GCME for Lennar Homes. So we know, I know pretty much my state. I've been here pretty much all my life, and I represent a great group. We have a lot of experience. We have done monster projects, but we also have done your boutique projects. We have participated in multiple communities, RFPs. Obviously, some start with RFQs, and then you get shortlisted and move on to the RFPs. And then, you know, we have gone through all different levels. Some we win, some we don't win, but it's a great experience and we move on. This is one of our largest projects we have done in the office. This is a 685 unit. It's a mixed-use. It's actually built, and it's a great asset for us.
How do you want to move to the next slide?
Okay. This is another project that is actually under construction. Obviously, these are not in the state of Florida, but I'm going to show you two that are currently here. So we do truly understand what you mean and what the residents want. Obviously, we follow up what was requested on the RFP, and we are willing to work on and move on if we get shortlisted, if we get selected, and, you know, work with the community to provide exactly all their requests and make sense, you know, for everyone. Next project. I'm very proud on the project on the bottom left-hand side, which is a Soul Stewart. It's a beautiful building. It was a very tight, complicated site. We have a railroad. We have a highway. We have the bridge and the marinas. It's in downtown Stewart. It's a beautiful design. It was designed under the West Indy style, which is a very popular, elegant building. And the one on the right side is in downtown Fort Lauderdale in a very transit, busy intersection, which is Sunrise and Federal Highway. This was a very tight, tight, tight site, very complicated project. It's a mixed-use. We had retail on the ground floor, tuck parking, what we call a donut. You know, it was very, very pretty, and we're very proud of it. So I'm very proud to be here, and thank you for the opportunity.
Now I'm going to introduce Andres Montero. He's the landscape architect. He's also a planner. So we incorporate him always from the beginning of the project, because for us, it's very important, you know, the, the green part of the project, et cetera. And I, as, as was told today, you know, this is a process. We presented something today, but that is going to evolve, and hopefully, it's going to become something beautiful, beautiful here in the city.
Hi. Good morning.
Morning.
Pleased to be here. My name is Andres Montero. I'm the owner of Andres Montero Landscape Architecture, based in Fort Lauderdale, Florida. We have over, we're land planners and landscape architects, and we have over 27 years of experience. I started my career working for a very large firm in Fort Lauderdale. It's the largest in, in the country and the world, EDSA. And then I started my own business. As Ricardo said, we always want to be involved in the process from day one, because it's very important what we do. We do not just landscape architecture. We also look at the whole site, the site planning, you know, all the hardscape, all the purview, impervious. You know, we always try to keep a balance of what's required. And, you know, when we can do more, you know, if we, if we can provide more purview areas, we do. You know, we create areas where we can do, you know, purview materials to increase the purview total area of the site. And we're showing a few projects. These two projects, one is in Fort Lauderdale, and the one at the bottom is, it's recently finished. It's a parking garage for Mount Sinai, the medical center in Miami Beach, very large The, the one on the right, oh, we do projects locally and international. We have a lot of experience with, with, like I said, land planning. The one on the right was a project I did, or we did, in China. It was a master plan for the entire community. We were hired to do landscape, but the master plan was so bad that we, we offered our services and they let us make the adjustments and make, and improve the, the master plan. This is a list of, I know, I'm not going to go back one by one, but it's a list of some of the projects that I've worked on over 27 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
And now I'm going to introduce Marcel Fernandez, MGM. They are general contractors. We are working with them in, in our project in Palm Beach, and we brought him to this project, because, you know, we are doing an excellent job in Palm Beach, and we want them to be involved in this project as well from the beginning. So Marcel.
Thank you for that. Good morning. My name is Marcel Fernandez. I represent General Contractor MGM Construction Group. A little bit about myself is I've been in construction for 24 years. All 24 years have been here in South Florida. My primary focus has always been mixed-use, low-rise, mid-rise, high-rise. That's kind of what our sweet spot. But we also do interiors. We do restaurants. We do doctor's offices. So we've done a lot in our business and in my career, all in Florida. So a couple of projects, just going to give you our most recent projects. The one on the top is a project that we're doing right now. It's a mixed-use. It's two 25-story towers. It's got a monstrous parking garage with an amenity deck that spans over 100,000 square feet. It's amazing. So we're, you'll see a picture of that's current status of that one. And the one on the bottom is something we built in Hollywood, Florida, and this is a project that we've completed. That's actually a completed picture. We sold it, or I'm sorry, the developer sold it very successfully. So those are two of the main projects we're doing. And then Deco Green is a project we're doing in Lake Worth right now, which, if I could throw something out there, I'm working with these developers. I've worked with a lot of developers in my career, thank God, and I can say that they really care about the community. They've actually been willing to pay extra to do something that people want, which is sometimes not the case, you know, with a lot of developers. So I appreciate them, and I appreciate to be here. I'm honored to be here with you guys. So thank you for considering me. If I could go to the next slide, I think it's this one. Okay. So this is the Oasis Hollendale project. That was the rendering that you guys saw. This is where we're at. The mixed-use portion, if you look in the front, that's all retail. And then actually, there's some offices on the left side on the second floor. That's all completed. It's actually sold. They were not leased. They were to be sold. They're all sold. We've done some of the build-outs for it. We're actually moving our headquarters. It's going to be there, actually. We just got the permit for that. Looking forward to it. We're starting with the first tower. We're on the 18th floor right now, and then the second tower will start once we complete the structure of the, what we call the west tower. But that's it. I just want to thank you guys for having me here, and it's a pleasure.
Okay. Here, we're going to show some pictures, because going to the next part, which is explaining about, talking about the project, this is the groundbreaking ceremony we had last year in September in Deco Green. We are more than midway on that project. It's, it's going to be ready at the beginning of next year. Here, you have some pictures. We, we do a lot of community events. We, we like to talk to people. We like to see what they want. Even some cities require that. A part of the process, some others, they don't require, but we do it anyway. And also- And also, the general contractor, they hire local people, you know, to help the communities as well, to create jobs and to foster everything in the cities that we work in. Now, we are going to pass and talk about the project. I'm going to, Annabella and Andres, they are going to talk everything about the project.
All right. So, again, we heard and understood pretty much what the description and instructions to us that were provided to us in order for us to create this concept. Again, this, like it was previously said, this is our first vision of what we think it will work best for the site. From experience, I know your Tampa Road corridor code requires more frontage to that area. We feel that when you do mixed-use projects, it depends really on the location, how much of a traffic flow you have on certain roads, but you want to try to keep your, after walking this area over here, we feel that it's not, we're not in a downtown buzzy, busy city. So, we wanted to create more and focus our building, and the orientation of the buildings more to the, to the south side of the parcel because we feel we can create that great boulevard, that pedestrian connectivity along the State Street more than the Tampa Road Boulevard. So, we have three buildings right now. The one on the further west side is our retail food and beverage. Our intent is to see if we can bring in some nice restaurants where people can gather and have some retail. The exposure is not going to be a blank wall facing Tampa Road. Our intent is to have windows, you know, signs that can draw attention to everybody driving by Tampa Road. Whoever comes from the west to the east, they can see that space. You know, it's calling out for a retail, you know? Oh, this is this store over here. It's not going to be a blank wall. So, we'll have to have, somehow, design it in a way that, you know, you can see it from State Street, that you have all that wonderful opening and frontage, and also at the same in the back. We are locating along the, in front of the retail, we have designated along Park Boulevard, a little plaza where we can envision a little gathering place where you buy your coffee and you sit, you enjoy the fountains and, you know, and relax and unwind. On the right side, that green area that you see there, it's what we consider your activity, your public park, your eventing park over here, exactly, right in there. And that's where all the magic occur, right? It's where all the events we're envisioning to happen, and we're going to go in greater detail as the presentation goes on. It's not that little. It's quite big. And, yeah, somebody pointed out like, this little? No, it's not that little. It's, it's, yes, well...
Well, we have numbers.
Yes, yes. We'll go over in greater detail. Right now, let me just explain the math. Right now, we're proposing 182 units, 96 units on each of the buildings. We're planning to tier or step the buildings. We're not going to create a huge block. No, our intention is to kind of step it. We go from four to five stories, and on the fourth floors, on the corners of each of the buildings, we're intended to have some amenities for the residents that will be living in these apartments, you know, like outdoor spaces. We're doing that right now in Deco Green, where we have ping-pong tables for the residents who rent in the community, barbecues, which is always nice to throw a party, and the views are going to be spectacular because, you know, it's incredible. You don't have anything in front of you. You'll see the beautiful bay right on the south side. So, at the very beginning, we started massaging this, and we went through an extensive shred internally, all of us, trying to come up with the best design and the most affordable and convenient and feasible for what we have over here. We started with a massive, you know, concept with a typical donut building and parking garage and wraparound, but then, after I walked through the site and I drove around a couple of times here, and I see something more laid back, more scaled to the proportion of our surroundings, and taking into consideration also the beautiful historical homes that you have in here. So, the style of that, what we're, oh, before I start on the style, let's go to the next image. Oh, I have the pointer, right here. So, on our next slide is pretty much our circulation diagram where we, how we're connecting. Again, this is a concept, but this is what we would like. We would like to have a lot of connectivity, pedestrian connectivity, super important for all these projects to be successful. You want to be able to walk down your unit, take your sidewalk, go to your retail, and enjoy your coffee or your lunch, your dinner, whatever. All the red dots are indicating pedestrian connectivity, how everybody's going to move around. The yellow ones are indicating pretty much where the traffic, where the cars will be. Obviously, we're not exit into a major Tampa Road. Obviously, that's impossible. So, our main drag will be along State Street, Washington. Those are going to be your most important means of egress and circulation for the site. Right now, I know we're showing a lot of parking spaces, but again, this is a concept. We can, we provide, we're providing more than its code required, and we're definitely to work with you guys to adjust and massage our project in order to meet the needs.
Yeah, I just want to add something to this comment, this slide. We, and I don't know exactly, I mean, this is conceptual, but we have done in other projects where along Tampa Road, if it's allowed, we could have a deceleration lane, one to enter the site and one to come out. Just thinking about that. I don't know if that's a possibility at this point, but...
All right. Right now, our proposed style is West Indies, kind of coastal, very elegant. I'll show you. This is our, right now, you can see here on the screen, it's just a, an aerial. Then, this is how we envisioned that the commercial could be. This will be on the mixed-use buildings. Oh, it's not moving. Oh, there we are. This is how we envision to be the retail area, open shops, walkable. It's very, very important to create that sense of space, of gathering. Go to the next one. These are some of the other images of what we're envisioning the retail and the lower portion of the mixed-use of the buildings will be. Next image. On the west side of the property, what we have created, it's called the public open space, where we're going to have all the fun part, right? Because we kind of divided the site for the residents and then more of a public space, which is along the retail portion. So, this is going to be more your fun part. This is where we are envisioning the food trucks, you know, coming in once a month, your jog at the park, your movie nights with the kids. It will be wonderful to do in that beautiful park that we're providing there. There will be an interactive fountain for the little ones, and this is all open. You know, you buy your coffee, you sit here, you enjoy, you bring the kids, you have fun, spend your day here. Next line? Oh, it is very important to...
Yeah, the numbers that we have on top is the three numbers that add up to 35,050 is the three main spaces in the center, which is the plaza, the open lawn, and the space in between that can be, is parking, but can also be integrated for a larger space. And then, on the left side, it's an existing, sorry, it's parking, but it could be turned into a food truck area for, to add to the total area of 56,000 square feet.
I think the batteries are going dead over here. They're not going anywhere. And Mayor, the 30 minutes did expire, just to let you know.
Okay. Can you wrap it up? Can you, can you guys wrap it up in like three minutes?
Yes, sure. Yes. The slides are...
Well, this is briefly. This is the left, the west corner of the side. There's some beautiful existing trees, one right in front of us, and we're trying to preserve all those trees. That was our, has been our goal from day one. And also, at the, at that corner, we have, we're proposing a clock tower to announce the project, which we would also like to propose it at the opposite corner, but it's not in our plan now.
That's okay. Go forward, go forward. Ricardo.
No, we have more material, but I think, you know, we presented the project the way we did it in the RFP. These are more numbers and everything else that you have in your disposal over there. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
All right. Thank you very much. Great presentation. I'll start out with the Vice Mayor. Do you have any questions?
I do, and thank you so very much for laying out all the information that you did this morning, and thank you, everybody, from the public, who was probably also told by Felicia they had to be here at nine this morning on a Saturday. So, wonderful, wonderful. But I do have a bunch of questions, and I wrote them out just so I can make sure that I had all my thoughts clear, so bear with me. And if some of them, we can't get there yet because we're still in the concept phase, I completely understand. I just wanted to make sure that they were asked, just in case we could get a little bit more information, if that makes sense. So, part of what is being asked by the residents is that we honor the history of Oldsmar. What has your team done to research Oldsmar, and what specific attributes are you planning to implement in the development to honor our past?
Yeah, we read about the history of the town, and we are trying to bring a style that doesn't chalk with what you have already, but is going to present something a little bit more modern style because we are in another century right now, so we have to update and we have to present something else. And also, you know, you have a very, a community that's very involved in all the process. You know, I haven't seen 100 people show up in a presentation, to be honest with you, in other communities that we have built, so we're going to consider everybody comments, and we're going to try to do it. We cannot do it all because it's impossible to please everybody, but we're going to try to do it. And also, you know, the next phase is a phase that the developer does with the building, the planning and zoning, you know, it's more private phase that, you know, they, as officials of the city, they have also a vision of what they want to bring, you know, in some other cities that we have built. They impose us the style that they want, and we follow through because we are not here to impose what we want. We are here to hear and present. So, it's more a meeting, some brainstorming between our team and the city officials, you know, to see what is the vision that you really want to have with this project.
Okay. So, the density incentive was a really hot topic in Oldsmar for a long time. It has been passed, but can you confirm if your development will need to utilize the density incentive, and if so, by how much?
Yeah, we are presenting 196, 192 units. I think the maximum density is 240 units. Also, the height of the building is a maximum of six stories. We're presenting five stories. So, because we had the same problem with our communities, they don't want developers to go too high, and sometimes they don't want the developer to use the full density. So, you know, we feel comfortable that 192 or close to 100 is a number that we can work with, but again, this is a meeting that we're going to have with the official to know, you know, what they want to have here, and also the infrastructure capacity. So, it's an important part of this process that we, at this point, we don't have the tools to determine if there is enough water, sewer, or electricity to, for that capacity. So, that is something that is going to be worked with the city officials as well.
So, you have the understanding that the incentive is available if you abide by the code, of course. But there was, there was a suggestion that whoever the developer is, no matter what, they would always take advantage to the full extent of as high as, but that's not the case in your development.
That's not the case for us.
I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Yes.
I see there's plans for kid spaces, but they're called residential amenities, a tot lot. And so, that wouldn't be for, in terms of residential amenities, people who live in the rental units. So, do you have any ideas or draws from the past experience that you've had for design elements for kids who are a bit older, like, say, like 10 to 14-year-olds, kids who don't even necessarily mom and dad with them, they can ride their bikes down there? What plans have you done in other projects or anticipate in doing this one that would accommodate that age group?
Yeah, we heard some of the comments in the presentation that we did a month ago, you know, that they wanted to have more amenity for kids. It's a matter of looking for a tenant that can fill that gap. We, as a developer, we can provide the space, but we need somebody to really put the business to target that kind of demographic that you have over here. So, that is something we're providing a basis, is looking for the right tenant to do that. And talking about the amenities, we restricted some amenities for the residents, and we are providing other in the public space, like a fountain or whatever, but for example, the dog park, if the community wants to have a public dog park, we can do it. You know, now, we have restricted for the residents, but we can do it public. I hear, I read that somebody wants to have a public pool. That's not possible. That's another level of liabilities and everything else, so the public is going to be restricted only for the residents. But we read the comments, and we're willing to work out and provide the necessary spaces to cover those needs.
Okay, thank you. And then, I know it's going to be, since we're still in the concept phase, but what's been your experience and successes with identifying the stormwater drainage issues? How do you go about that in other developments? What is that process there?
Isaac, can you talk about the project with the drainage?
Can you get the mic? And it's really just so, as we move forward, there's a lot of questions just in social media and just through other platforms. People are just like, what about the drainage? What about the drainage? What about the drainage? Now, I understand we're still in the concept phase, but if you could say, in the past, this is what we've done to address it. We anticipate doing the same thing if we end up moving forward.
Sure. Obviously, I'm not a civil engineer, but I have a lot of experience doing it. One of the projects, we built big chambers under the parking. So, those are cement chambers instead of pipes. You just build chambers that, when it rains, obviously, it starts filling up all the chambers under the parking, and then that water goes to another wet retention pond that we have on site, and then from that retention pond, it goes to the original retention pond. So, what that does is that you're able to withhold all the rain that comes into the site. I have a very interesting story. Two years ago, in another site that we have, the ones that I was showing that has 40-town homes and the commercial, we built a huge, a huge pond on the site, calculated by our civil engineer. That wet pond is, I don't know, over an acre, and two years ago, if you remember, two, two and a half, I think, two years ago, we had a huge storm in Orlando that was cold, like a 100-year storm or more. So, all our site was able to withhold all that water, and there was no flood whatsoever in that area. Of course, this is calculations done by engineers that are preventing, again, this 100-year storm that you will think that doesn't come, but it came two years ago, and we prove it that it was done properly. So, the way you design these things is by some chambers, some retention, some wet retention pond, and some dry retention pond. What I can tell you is with the... What I can tell you is that with, with the codes of Florida today, the possibility of you having a flood in your area with the design that you're mandatory to do is, I, I, I don't see that happening. Because, again, the codes are done and are enforced in a way that the new construction have, have to be able to withhold the hundred-year storm. I hope that answered the question.
It does. Thank you. So another discussion point amongst the residents about this project is the term small-town charm, which I find difficult to define, but it's said quite a bit in Oldsmar. How would you define small-town charm? And what about your proposal specifically addresses maintaining it here in Oldsmar?
Yeah, well, you, everybody has to be aware that you are part of a bigger thing. You know, you are in Tampa Bay, north of Tampa Bay. This is growing incredibly in the last five to ten years. So your city is gonna grow, but we wanna keep that style, that town feel, that, that you can, you can do it. It's, it's something that you can do. You know, we are not presenting here a high-rise. We're presenting a low-rise building. If we need to lower the building, we lower the building. You know, it's a matter of, of talking with the officials, what, what, what is the goal over here? But yes, we're gonna bring that feel, you know, of a street with, with chops, with kids around, with, with families playing. So that's, that's what we're gonna bring over here with our project.
I, I wanna add to that, that in the city of Lake Worth, that has a very strong personality, just as, as this one, that the city of Lake Worth has a very artistic personality. And the way that we designed it eh, the city wanted to incorporate some art into the buildings. So we're going through a process, or we have already, already a finalist of an artist that is going to do some artistic work, work on the sides of the building. And, and that, that, that has been approved by city, city council and, and city members. And, and what I can tell you is that the feedback that we have from the, from the, from the people in, in Lake Worth are very excited and very happy to see that integration happen, eh, going on. So I have no doubt that we're gonna be able to replicate that same synergy eh, synchronicity of what people want with eh, some eh, parts of the development so, so we can integrate it.
Okay, thank you. In your informational packet, it was based on being all rental properties. But there was also a note in there that said it was, the market analysis was going to be conducted to explore ownership of condos. Have you done any of that market analysis yet? Or are we still recognize or understanding that this might be all rentals and we're basing the, the concept plan on that currently?
Yeah, well, we, we did, we proposed a rental because we, we found out that the city is seventy percent, seventy-seven percent of the, of the people that live here, they own, they own the, the, the properties that they live in and only twenty-three percent renting. So there is, you know, if you go to the renting side, you're not gonna have too many competition. So there is a market for rental. We did a, an analysis for the rental. However, in the presentation that we did eh, a month ago, we had the same question. So we are open to do condos, but it's, we have to do a more eh, depth analysis of the condo market specifically. We did that analysis on the rental side and we, we deduced that there is a market and that it, that is, you know, the rents that we're gonna offer and everything else, there is a market for it. The condo market, we don't know if there is a market yet. And also, these days where getting financing is very difficult due to the interest rates and hopefully they're gonna go down next year. However, financing a condo project is more complex than financing a rental project. So this project, they have to work financially as well when you present the, the project to the lenders, because they, they lend seventy percent of the project. They are, they are your biggest eh, partner. So you have to convince them that it's gonna work and they, they're gonna do third-party review of the studies that we do and they are gonna do another study. So you're gonna have a lot of people saying, yes, it's a possibility or no, there is no possibility. So it's more complex, but we, we, we are open to do condos if we find that the market is there for, for condominiums.
So market feasibility will dictate that, but this, this concept plan was based on rental?
Yes.
Okay, I understand. Thank you. So what specific actions will be taken if, if we move forward regarding resiliency and sustainability? So we, we have the bay, as everybody knows, Ariel's Park. And so we're at the top of the bay, so we're prone to flooding because the water's got nowhere to go except up onto people's properties. So with that in mind and being down at the other end of Park, what actions would you think would be implemented here? What have you done in the past with similar areas in order to address that ahead of time?
Yeah, well, we, we have a base eh, level that we have to achieve by Florida. So when we, when we do the, the analysis of the, the survey of the project and everything else and we, and we eh, eh, review the, the codes, we know where it's gonna be our base. And that base is by code is, is, is mandatory and it's because no, eh, no flood is gonna affect that level in the next a hundred years as, 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 you know, Isaac told before. So we are gonna start from there, just to, just, you know, to place the, the, the base of the building in, in, in the right level.
Okay.
Is what we're gonna do.
And the different materials to build eh, the buildings? I believe that you had mentioned that it was, I don't know if it was wood or not recycled materials, but however that is, if you could explain your past experiences with using those materials in order to, to build?
No, no, we, we build in concrete and block. That, that is all we do, even though in some of the cities that we build in, they allow us to go to, to good and other, other materials. We, we, we build concrete and block, which is, you know, durable and, and you don't have any, any problem with, with that construction. Of course, you know, there is a component of cost. So we're gonna try to do these buildings very efficient in order not to increase the cost, because those materials are very, very costly, costly compared to good and other materials. But we, everything that we show today is, was built by, eh, with concrete and blocks.
Okay, understood. So can you detail your experience with projects like this that are adjacent to, or in our case, nearly are abutting residential, eh, already current established residential neighborhoods? And what considerations are taken to, or anticipate implementing to limit noise, congestion, et cetera, eh, for the, for the residents who live near here? Lighting, noise, time of day, that sort of thing?
Yeah, well, regarding traffic, we, we are mandatory to do a traffic study and that is something that we're gonna perform with a third-party eh, company. And then we're gonna review that report with, with the city and we're gonna decide what, you know, where to put the entrances and the exits. And, and there is also fire compliance as well, you know, to, for the ambulance and for the trucks. So it's a very complex decision. Eh, that is regarding parking, the access and the ingress and egress.
Sure.
Eh, noise, we can limit, you know, some cities, they have, they have certain time that you need to, they don't allow, for example, eh, retail open up to midnight. You know, that is some regulations that, that the city have to have. And if we have a, 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 a tenant that is gonna create noise, music, whatever, you know, we, we try to, to limit the, the amount of music or the time of the music outside the, the, the space and, and focus on the inside. Those are regulations that we can apply internally to our project and also review what are the regulations of the city regarding noise.
Okay. In terms of lighting?
Light, lighting...
Just, eh, I, I can anticipate, um, some, some of folks live on Park or the surrounding neighborhoods in Washington have. Oh, the bright lights are shining in my house all night.
Yeah.
So is there a method for the lighting that is taken into consideration when you're so close to residents?
Yeah, there, there is a study that we need to perform as well called photometric study that is done by the, by the electrical engineer and...
Yeah, we have, we actually did a project and I just wanted to chime in and I'm sorry to interrupt you, but eh, it was a project, it was a mixed-use project next to a high-end residential.
Okay.
And we were right into it, abutting into it. So we provided a privacy wall and then all the light poles along that side, we pushed them in to the opposite side of the parking lot and we put a shield on the lighting, on top of the she, of, of the light, so it doesn't spill out any reflection towards the residents next to us. That's how we
Okay.
solve that problem. But there are multiple solutions that you can do over here.
It's taken into consideration.
Oh, yes, of course, of course. Again, we're in, in a very early stage, but all of that goes on during the whole process, yes.
Okay. So all of us are hoping, expecting, and I think Isaac had mentioned it, about the artistic elements to be incorporated into any future project. Do you have, anyone you work with or plans in place to, to attract local artists? I know everybody loves to say local artists, but is there a plan in place about that? And then in terms of allowing for live performances, is there a plan for a space that can be utilized by our local performers? That we've got a, a couple of different, what you call them? I guess theater groups?
Theater groups.
Yeah, theater groups. Younger kids, but they like to do, say they're doing like a, they're almost like a practice run for a show and they're not gonna do it at Ariel's Park, but that might just need to be a little bit of a smaller venue. Is there something in, in place in this or that you've done in the past where we can, we can turn this space into it? You know, not necessarily the parking lot, like we can put the food trucks there, but another way in order to have a show like that?
Yeah, yeah, we can do. We have, as, as we show, we have fifty-six thousand square feet of public space. Well, we can do a lot of things over there.
Okay.
And regarding the local artists, we, artists, we decided in labor to bring an international artist to the city. They have a, a pretty, pretty big eh, eh, pool of local artists over there. So we, but we brought this international and we, we submitted that design to the vote of the local art, artists and they choose what design or what, you know, to put in the building. So it was a, was an open forum with the, with the city eh, with the, with the artists over there. But we decided to bring an international one. Here, we, we don't know who the artists are. We can meet with them and we, we can talk, of course, we can talk with them.
Okay, and I've got one more question. And it's really just, what's the history of this team together on working on projects? And why was this team specifically put together to, to move forward with this RFP and this concept plan for Oldsmar?
Well, me and my partners, Isaac and Reynaldo, we have been together for ten years. Of, of course, we have more experience than those ten years. My experience, thirty years, it's a lot. But with, with the other rest of the team, we have been in, eh, together since 2020 with the labor eh, project. And we have other projects in pipeline as well that we are working in, into the design process and everything. But we have worked like a, like a team. So, so it's eh, it's very nice to go to a place to enjoy what you're doing and, and to have people that work with you and, because this project is, every day is, is an issue, is a problem that you need to solve, that you need to take decisions. So we are here, everything that you see here are the heads, deciding what to do. Eh, it's not, you, we don't have like an assistant. We, you know, we work ourselves. We, we travel, we stay, we, we, we see and we decide what to do. So this is, you know, together, everybody in the last five years with Labor, I included in the presentation a letter of recommendation from, from the city, the Community Redevelopment Agency manager, talking about, about ourselves. And, and, you know, we put together the same team for this project because it's, it's almost the same scope and, and, and size.
That was for the Deco project?
Yes.
Okay, and then the Lake Worth CRA manager?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Go ahead, thank you.
Councilmember now?
Oh, okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor, for, for those questions. You didn't really steal any of the ones I had written down, so.
Mine as well.
Awesome, we got some more. All right, so, uh, thank you for being here and, and as, as well as all your, your team leads being here as well. I think that's important to kind of get the voices of the different perspectives of, of everybody that's gonna contribute on this project. So you mentioned we, a lot of, we can do this, we can do that. Obviously, that's all in the lead-up to the project being built and finished. But once you finish, is it your traditional path forward to what you develop? Do you keep your properties and, and operate them or find the management company? Or do you typically sell? What, what's that kind of blind of, of your, your work history?
Yeah, no, we, we keep the property for certain, certain time, of course. All the developers, you know, the end result is to sell it to a, to a third-party. But if you keep the management that is in place, you don't notice the difference if, if our property or somebody else's property. So the most important part is the management company and we try to do long-term eh, eh, agreements with the management company. So if we decide to sell the property, they stay longer with that property. But, but that's, that's what we do, you know. There is a time that we sell. I, I cannot tell in this project specifically when, but we, at, at least we complete the project and we try to keep it until we fill it up, fill the, the units, the commerce, the, the retail and everything and it's a running and then we decide if we wanna sell or, or not.
And then, I guess, just kind of to tail onto that, as far as management goes, do you have preferred partners that you work with? Cause a lot of your projects have been primarily central in South Florida. Is it more important to have somebody that's familiar with this area versus they can kind of cover the whole state? What's that history?
No, we are working with, with, with a partner in, in Orlando. Maybe, maybe not. We are, we are in conversations. If, if we get this, they're gonna be the one managing this project as well. So it's in the same area.
I four quarter, okay, good. I think it was probably both of the GI, GAI as well as the city's kind of initial technical review as it relates to the parking. Can you share any experience you have or, or anyone from the team as far as looking at shared parking models or, or that, that's, that kind of modern look at parking? Because as some of the residents mentioned is, you can look at anywhere, whether it's commercial developments, I mean, in my own neighborhood where there's far more parking than what really appears to be necessary, except for those little peak bumps of holidays and things like that. So, and any details you can share there?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'm happy to hear that we are over-parking this project because we always are under-parking in other projects. Eh, we, specifically in this project, we tried the concept of the, of a parking garage, parking structure, but it's very costly to build. And that is gonna affect at the end of the day, the rent that you're gonna charge to your tenants. So we decided, eh, you know, from the very beginning, not to go for the parking structure. And I can show you over here, if you can put up the presentation. I have, you know, a, a slide over there showing our initial concept, including the parking structure. Here. So initially, this is our initial concept. We have the parking structure. Of course, we have more green space in this concept. But then when we started reviewing the financial feasibility of this project, was very costly to build and we decided not to do it. And, and as you saw in the other projects that we are building, or none, none of them are, they, they have
A structure.
A, a structure because it's, it's costly and it's gonna affect the rent.
Andrew, so if I understand correctly your question, you're asking if there is any well of like a sharing type of parking? So in the project that I show you of the eighteen acres that has the commercial in the front and then the residential in the par, in the back, the parking is much more limited than in this particular project. So the way that works is that there is a type of eh, eh, sharing parking agreement where the residents can use the parking of the commercial at night, when maybe the commercial is closed, and vice versa. So there is a way here that we can also have some of the parkings here at certain hours that are more eh, towards the commercial and some of the parking can, can be more for residential. So being said that, in a future stage, there is a possibility of reducing the amount of parking, like the gentleman was saying, if, if, if it works and if we can see eh, if an analysis of having that cross-parking analysis. So there is a, there are times that none of them are, some of them are not used and can be used by, by the other part. I think that's very doable.
Okay.
And, and let me, let me point something out here. If we talk about condominiums, for example, when you deliver the units, you lose the control. So there is a condo, dom, you know, association over there and you do, you lose the control. So keeping this as a rental, we can control everything. If we decide to go for the condominium, we have to put that in an agreement, you know, shared parking, whatever, you know, in order to leave it there inside the condominium association. So that is, that is very important to consider, you know, going one way or the other.
Okay, very good. Let's see. As far as, as I'm kind of just touched on a little bit of res, eh, rental versus condo, the potential on that front. As far as just general project feasibility goes, how, how dependent on the ability to fill out the commercial space is that relative to filling out that residential space? You know, how critical? Because there are the concerns of other projects have been developed where... Because there are the concerns of other projects have been developed where, well, everything seems to be all fine and dandy because the residential component's filled in. It's kind of a ghost town on the ground floor. So how critical is that to the success of the overall project to get that commercial space with tenants that are viable?
Yeah, no, anchor tenants. So we start, you know, very early in the process to find out who is going to be the commercial tenant. For example, in the project in Lake Worth, like we haven't completed the project, we're talking already with two tenants. And we have in mind the mix of tenants that we want to bring, you know, a restaurant, a coffee shop, or an ice cream place. We have in mind, and that is something that we talk to the neighbors to see what they want to have, because at the end of the day, they are going to be the ones going to the place and paying for the service. But we start in early stages of the process, just to find out who is going to be the tenant. Of course, when we start construction and when we are in the middle of construction, where we sign contracts, you know, at the beginning, it's usually letters of intention that they want to be. And we can design in early stages the space that they want to have. But that is how we do it with commercial. We start, you know, very early in the process to bring those tenants in place.
Okay, very good. Well, your answer kind of took care of the follow-up question. So, because it's, you're taking on that responsibility to get those people in there to help the commercial aspect of it be successful. Vice Mayor touched on amenities a little bit. So there's a fair amount of open public space and then those private amenities. Have you had any instances where there's more accessibility to the full scope of the amenities in a project? Or is it typical that there's still always some component of residential-only amenity?
Yeah, it's typical because liability, for liability. You have to have, you know, restricted areas for the residents, and you have to have the public space where public enforcement can go and stop something. But in the private space, you rent to those tenants or you sell those units to the owners because they have some private space that can be alone without anybody from the, from outside. So it has to be very detailed what is public and what is private in these kind of projects.
Okay. Two more. So this kind of goes to the team aspect, or the lead and the team aspect, helping me with the scoring. So as far as your kind of project portfolio, what would you say is either percentage or if you have a number of the total projects that did include kind of the residential, commercial, you know, the broadest picture of mixed use? Because I know you had somewhere it was like just office and commercial?
What is the percentage between the?
There is a residential component in the project.
The residential is always, you know, big because that is going to bring people living there that is going to use the commercial spaces. So if you do more retail, it's more like a retail space with residential. Mixed use is more, always is the residential component is bigger than the commercial component. But as far as, as far as percentage, it depends. Here, we have a lot of commercial, we have twenty-five thousand square feet. We were talking, you know, in the presentation that we did a month ago, to increase it to ten thousand more because they wanted to have more. But everything depends if we can fill out the spaces. It's better to have a ten thousand square feet building filled than a thirty-five thousand square feet building not filled. So it's better to have small with the service and not bigger with our any service.
Okay, that's helpful information. I'll rephrase my question a little bit. In terms of the total portfolio of projects you've had, how many projects have had a residential component versus projects that you've developed with no residential component within it?
No, few, only few. The majority is what we show today, is mixed uses.
All right, very good. And then finally, the Vice Mayor kind of touched on a little bit, as far as the team goes, how many other projects has this specific team done? I think we have Deco Green in the fold. Is that the only one or are there others where it's been?
The entire team, Deco Green, with Annabella, we have done other projects.
Okay.
And with Andres too, sorry.
Okay. So some of the team is more seasoned than the current full team?
Yes.
Together?
You know, the new, the new kid in the block is MGM, which is very strong. We use other general contractor before, but we met MGM through our lender, the lender introduced us to them. And we, from the beginning, we clicked and we started working together and has been phenomenal.
Okay, very good. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to skip around a little bit because my counterparts up here have asked a lot of the questions that I have here. And I have, of course, typed them out, which will surprise exactly no one. So one of the scoring criteria, and I appreciate that you guys are here and you have your unique vision and how you've interpreted our design. Believe me, I am so grateful that you have brought your depth and wealth of knowledge to this project. There are questions that I have, I don't want you to take offense to them, but I feel I need to ask them because of the scoring criteria that we have and because of the public feedback we've gotten along this sort of two-year journey. So one of the things that I noticed is the Tampa Road interface. And I know that there's a desire among the group to pay more attention to the State Street interface. But how does the site, as you've designed it, pay attention at all to that Tampa Road interface?
That is a very good question. You know, you as a city, you have to decide if you want to, if you want to put the retail in the city or if you want to encourage the retail in the road. You cannot have both because if you have both, one of them is going to fail, and you don't want to fail. So you have to decide, okay, let's put the retail in the road that is going to attract a lot of traffic over there, but you don't want to have anything in the main street. I think that is what you want to create with a town center over here, you know, to have more developments. It's not only us, I saw that there is a lot of properties over there that can be developed in the future and have a beautiful street over there with retail. So we concentrated everything right now to the city, and we didn't put anything, just, you know, some windows or whatever to the road. But that's something that we need to decide what way to go. And that should be done together, I think, it's not our call over here.
This will require, remember, this is just a concept. We do understand that there are rules and regulations and will comply with the Tampa Corridor code. And if I was reading correctly, you know, you don't have to mandatory put your buildings facing Tampa Road as long as you provide pedestrian connectivity, it's allowed by your code. So that was the way I interpreted. But there are ways that, again, this is a concept. It can be massage, we can take some buildings lowered, expand more, we have plenty of parking. I mean, we can certainly redefine, as we move forward, the whole final concept for the master plan.
And I know there's a lot of square footage for retail office in Building One, but it looks like Buildings Eight and Nine had ground-level retail office space as well.
Yes.
Some of the square footage calculations for those buildings on the ground level seem to be, I mean, you tell me, this is not my area of expertise, very small. So for example, on the area that's kind of closest to the center of the amenity strip, that says Office Retail, six hundred square feet. What types of leases could we bring into six hundred square feet?
Well, we call them micro retail. And we are doing that right now in the project in Lake Worth Beach at Deco Green, where we have your typical commercial retail on Building Four along Dixie Highway. It's your typical, you know, sixty-to-eighty-foot-deep bay, retail bay. But on the smaller-sized Building One and Three, which are on, it's like a U shape, right? On these two smaller buildings, we're bringing your micro retail. And that is your nail salon that doesn't need your two thousand square feet or a thousand square feet. Well, you can have a little, you know, six hundred square feet for a tattoo parlor, you know, a nail, a hair salon, you know, for the smaller tenants that don't care for the larger space. And it has been very attractive. Now, you have, we have a combination over here. We have a typical, normal retail footprint on the west side, which is more your commercial, your public space area. And then underneath the buildings, we're creating this micro retail for that smaller tenant that doesn't require that large building footprint.
Yeah, and we deliver those spaces ready to occupy, bathroom, AC, everything. So a local retailer that they don't have too much money to invest in a property, they can just get in to the space.
It's moving ready.
It's moving ready, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
On the documents that were submitted, we received a, I believe it's called a volumetric look, I'm, take it out of here. This kind of, there's, it's just a white block where you can't really tell. Today, you showed us a building that had, I believe you mentioned, a West Indies-style look to it, which you know that's not in our architectural guidelines, right? Okay, okay. So one of my questions is, this didn't necessarily show some of the step backs that are required under the code. How would adding those step backs or requiring, or, you know, coming into compliance with that, those requirements, affect the square footage that you guys have calculated for some of these apartments up on the higher levels?
Yeah, we have, you know, a lot of people also comment on that picture over there because that was a volumetric study and people didn't understand, there was not a style, it was just boxes.
Yeah.
But we talk about, you know, a setback in the second floor, just to leave the retail in the first floor and the second floor setback. And then we have to comply with the code that is, I think, in the fourth floor, that we need another setback. Those are things that we are going to consider moving forward, you know, because they need more design and more. But the units, we can adapt it, you know, we can grow it or shrink it, you know, we can adapt it in order to comply with those setbacks.
On the documents you submitted and some of the presentation that you showed us today, the first part of the presentation focusing on some of your prior work on Millenia Park, Sand Lake Station, they didn't necessarily show those sort of experience in doing the step backs and the unique characteristics that I was hoping that your past experience might show. Because I do feel like Oldsmar has some unique characteristics, and a lot of those projects that were submitted seem to feel like larger boxes. And I hear you today telling me that you, we can do that. But can you give me any concrete examples of some of those unique characteristics that we could incorporate?
Yeah, just a point over here. In the project we showed, they were not required by the city. And of course, it's easier to do a box than setbacks, it's more costly. But you require, and it's why we're bringing an architect with experience, so you can talk about it.
Okay, we have, we actually have on the process right now a project that we had very strict code compliance with regards height and setbacks. It's in Alapara. And it's a twelve-story, well, building, kind of complicated site. But, you know, we're going to be butting into one portion of the side, and then we got to go three stories height. And then after the three stories height, we got to set back another twenty foot, and then we got to go. So it's going to be a tier of, until we get to the top floor. So we have experience, we did not show it over here, but more than happy and gladly to share with you after our hearing today. We have another project that we're doing together right now. It's called In the City of Lake Worth. And again, this was a comment from the building department and the planning and zoning. It's not in the code, but it was their preference that along Tenth Avenue, they did not want us to go a full five-story. They said, can you take two floors out? And we said, sure, we can take two floors out, we'll move all the units to the back. And again, we're tearing the building. And what that has able us as an architect to do is create this wonderful roof canvas that it's great for outdoor amenities. So we transfer all, some of the activities that were on the ground level, we put them on the floor. We put the barbecue areas, wonderful trellis, you know, lounge chairs on these terraces that we created on that upper level. So we have done, and we're very familiar, and we definitely can work over here on, you know, on the massing.
When you made those changes, did it substantially affect the number of units that you then had to incorporate in order to have? Do you see what I'm saying? Because if you take away indoor space, then you have half a unit.
We're adding it somewhere else.
Right, that's my question. So it gets added somewhere else. So then, would doing that on this site change your pro forma such that perhaps you would need to include more units?
Not necessarily, not really. Like, let's say you don't like the U-shaped buildings that we're proposing right now. We can come up with different schemes, you know, we can come up with a U-shaped building. Maybe our buildings get oriented in a very different way. I mean, it's just a matter of, we have always worked with the planning and zoning and at that very early stage, before we go into the building department. Because once you go into the building department, that's set in stone, and that's what you're really going to see in build. But prior to that, we're accustomed to hear and to work with the planning and zoning department and get their feedbacks. Again, Ricardo mentioned it, that there are some cities that are very strict with their design guidelines, right? Like, I'll give you the perfect example because we're doing a lot of projects in the city of Lake Worth. You know, they're very strict with their design guidelines. They actually have a manual to tell you what to do, how to do it, the windows, you know, the style. It's just, unfortunately, you know, you don't have the freedom to create, to be creative. I mean, you can, obviously, you can take that, you know, but we do, somehow we make it very pretty. But, you know, so we're willing to work with it. You know, it's not something unusual. I don't have an ego, and believe me, everybody have different tastes, and I understand it. And our mission as an architect is to listen to the client, to really fulfill their imagination, so.
I am, I think the issue is that we, Oldsmar does have, we have a book. So we have architectural guidelines and we have the Tampa Road corridor, and then we have some additional elements that I think people are hoping to see. And so I think that, you know, because some of that information was available at the time that the RFP and the LOI went out, I think I was hoping to see a little bit more of that in the documents that came to us as opposed to the plan that we will incorporate that in the future. That's why, that's why I ask.
Yeah, well, I think you RFP called out for a concept. And during the feedback, we, it was our understanding that there was not that much requirement to provide you. It was just pretty much a broad concept at this point. So, and that's how we interpret it. Obviously, some cities are more picky or they give you a specific points that they want to see and how they want to see it. But, you know, we're here to make it happen, so, and, well, we're open.
Okay. What experience does the group have in ensuring an appropriate mixture of leases among the ground floor and also in the larger Building One? And the reason that I ask, and you might have heard some comments from the public, that we have sort of an oversaturation of certain types of tenants, and then, you know, we have then, on the other side, what we're looking for and hoping for as a community. Do you have on your team someone who has the ability to ensure that that leasing mix happens?
Yeah, the partner that we talked, that they manage the property, they have a realty, commercial realty arm of that company. And then with us, we determine what kind of tenants. And then with us, we determine what kind of tenants we want. In this case, of course, we're going to ask the neighbors and they have people looking, representing tenants and looking for tenants all the time.
So, they're not necessarily on this team, but that's somebody that you would bring in to help at a specific stage?
Yeah, we are working together in Lake Worth right now.
Okay.
And they are going to be, we are in conversation for them to be part of this team as well, yes.
Okay. Is the pro forma data on the rental amounts based on this current area demographic? It's based on Oldsmar or Pinellas County?
Well, we did a market analysis, not only in the city, you know, three miles, five miles around the city. Because people is going to travel, you know, 10, 15, 20 minutes maybe to come here, to live over here and to work someplace else. So, it's based on a bigger area.
Okay. On the circulation maps with the yellow dotted line and the red dotted line, I was a little bit concerned about project safety because there's those large sort of compacted parking areas with lots of the bump out islands with trees. Trees, yeah, thank you. But I saw a couple crosswalks and I'm trying to think like, okay, if I'm a pedestrian, why would I circulate around the outside of that area? Or how would I navigate going through that area to reach some of the destinations on the state street side?
Oh, that's something that need more, more design, you know. What we provided, what we provided today was the obvious connectivity that we have right now, but of course, we need to later on in the process see, you know, the wide sidewalks and the locations and everything else.
Yeah, sorry. And I think some, I mean, it was shown in two colors, red and yellow. Yellow is vehicular, but the red can be divided in all, you know, in different ranges. There are areas where you go just to, from your car to your apartment and there will be areas where you have, you know, maybe special paving crosswalks where are more important, more relevant to walk to the, you know, like from the residential to the commercial area, you know, are more, are safer than other areas.
Yeah, okay, gotcha. The single large building, we've been kind of calling it Building One, that's the 17,000 square foot building. Is that meant to be multiple storefronts, sort of like a strip mall? Or is it meant to be one large tenant?
No, no, it's big enough to have.
It's one building footprint and it's your retail, commercial building. That's where we envisioning to bring in two restaurants on each end and then more your retail typical base in the center for any store or any commercial.
So, it would be under one roof?
It's one single building, exactly. It will be articulated.
Divided in the inside.
On the inside, everybody have their typical base. That's how you set up your retail buildings is, you know, you create the box and then everybody has their square footage, right? Either you rent one bay, two bays, three bays, it depends on the tenant that you're bringing onboard. But the aesthetics is just one building, but it will have movement, flow. The intent is not for you to read one massive big building and that's not our intent. And as you see retail, in any retail or any mall, everybody, you know, you can see a variation of parapets, cantilever structures, colonnades, seating areas, little tiny benches in front of the stores. And so, it will be tailored, but at this point, it's just a concept. That's where we envision that your retail, commercial space will be there. And pretty much where the restaurants, I think the restaurants will work great at this location over here. Because you have the plaza and you have the park, so they can integrate.
Would there be any possibility or appetite for dividing that building into two buildings to create more circulation or areas in between?
Sure, even though this building is not that long for a building footprint of this category, we can break it into two modules and create a little courtyard, a little trellis, a little, you know, seating area, sure, you know.
So, it wouldn't necessarily affect the pro forma such that it made it, you know, because I understand that one building has one set of, you know, underground utilities, for example. But if you start dividing the buildings, then you have the cost of doing the undergrounding and the power for it and so I want to make sure that I'm not.
And let's say the developer brings in a special tenant, a restaurant, a chain restaurant. Well, you know, they're going to have their design guidelines that we have to follow.
Sure.
Right? And maybe they'll say, hey, can we get a pad? And can we isolate, you know, can we be isolated and create just ourselves, you know, our building and then have the rest of the retail next to it? Sure, I mean, we're, we have to decide it at a very early stage because once you design, start your DD process and your, you know, final permit in construction, you don't want to make changes and modifications. You need to previously have all this design way ahead so you can plan your utilities, your connection, your servicing, your loading zones, your where is the, you know, the food trucks are going to come in, how are you going to get trash? All that needs to be incorporated to the design too. It's not only the pedestrian, it's how you make the building function too that we need to be concerned about.
And I think you showed on one of the slides that the total square footage for the public areas was 37,500, is that correct?
Yeah, we have a total of 56. If we incorporate the parking that we can close and put it, you know, in events, but the area, yes, let me look.
Yeah, that's just the area to the west, but there are some other areas along the Building One and Two, along State Road, that are not including that number. I mean, all that frontage on that residential building, their seating areas, their, you know, under shade, it's hard to see that detail in the plan.
We presented the public space, but there are other areas, you know, along the residential buildings that are going to be, you know, with landscaping, benches, et cetera, so.
Is there a specific amount of public space that it would be capped at? For example, could you double that? Could you double the 37,000 to, you know, 70-some thousand?
Well, not really, because we need to comply with the parking. You know, that is something that we're going to review. We are overparking right now, we can get less parking and add that to public space, but there is a certain time that we cannot do anymore.
So, for the parking, that's an interesting question. One of the things that we got feedback on was that you included two spaces for every residential unit when we actually only need one space for every residential unit. So, that would shrink down that parking and potentially allow for some more public space?
Yeah, yes. But, you know, we tried to put at least two spaces for the bigger units, three bedrooms and two bedrooms, because that is a family and they have two cars.
So, you would rather include an extra space per unit?
You know, when you, if you are underparking, when you start renting and you don't have the extra parking space to provide, that family is not going to rent in your property, it's going to go someplace else. So, one thing is the code and one thing is the reality that you're going to see when you start renting. So, we tried to put at least two spaces in the bigger units and we can put one in the smaller units. So, that is something that we're going to, after we define the unit mix, because in the meeting that we had a month ago, they asked to have more two-bedroom and three-bedroom units because families are going to move in. We have right now a lot of one-bedroom units. So, that is something that when we start working about the unit mix, the parking is going to change. But another requirement, the requirement is going to stay the same, is what we are going to put to satisfy those tenants.
Okay. Let me just double check. Okay, I think those are all the questions I have right now, but you know me.
As always, my esteemed colleagues have covered most of my questions as well. My one singular question that I think really hasn't been addressed too much, you talked about the base blood elevation and you're going to begin construction at that. Have you given any consideration to bringing in additional so that that elevation of those structures can be in the positive, which assists everyone, you know, on those bottom floors?
Yeah, everything is going to depend when we work with the civilian, you know, how much field you need. Because if we need to fill more, it's going to be more expensive and there is a problem that the project is not going to be feasible. So, that is something that we can study, you know, to put it a little bit more than required, but that depends of that, of the field that we're going to need there.
And just something to consider because I know flood rates continue to escalate as do flood insurance premiums. So, you just want to really help, you know, wherever you can in that point. That's really it, everyone else covered my question, so I'm fine at this point.
So, first of all, Ricardo, thank you for all you and your team have done for us. You've done a great presentation. I just have a couple of follow-up questions. I just want to piggyback off what the council members have said. I want to start with the parking spaces. You mentioned the two parking spaces for the residents. Will those parking spaces also be used for the retail restaurants?
Yeah, we talk about shared parking, yes.
So, all that will be shared, thank you for that. And then the other question I had, you talked about the commercial clients in your past projects, some of your projects that you've done around the state of Florida. By the way, I think that's very impressive, some of the projects that you have done. The commercial customers or do you have someone on your staff that actually focuses on trying to find them?
Yeah, we have this partner that is going to manage the property and bring the commercial, yes. Sorry, they have a team that they do that full-time. You can talk more about the commercial space.
We do have a commercial partner in some of our projects. The company name is, if we decide to join together in this project, his name is Avanti Way. They have over 2,000 realtors with them and they have a very strong commercial division. But we also try to work in that particular market with somebody that is very knowledgeable of the area. And we either partner up with them and combine or in some cases, we just chose that particular partner. In the, in the one that we're finishing right now, the Sand Lake Station, the commercial part is going to be done in the next like four or five months. We decided to choose a person that is very knowledgeable of that area. He's been in central Florida, he was born and raised here. So, when I mentioned this project to him, he really liked the area and he understands. So, I'm not saying he's going to be the person, but we have different allies and network in order to work with certain people to bring to this project. So, it's not us particularly looking for the clients, it's us with them helping and understanding what we need. So, something very important that Ricardo was saying is that the front commercial is 17,000 square feet, which I think it's a nice sweet spot for the commercial. Going back to one of Katie's question, it's very easy to separate that into two buildings in half or maybe it's not 17,000, it's 18,000, you divide it by 9,000 each. It's not complicated at all. And then we have the possibilities in the back to do other commercials. If you ask me, being, you know, very open, those commercials in the back, I think it's something to be determined in the future if we think that it's necessary to do it or if we just do the 18,000 commercial in the front with kind of a, I don't want to say, I don't want to use the word guarantee, but be more sure that those 18,000, we know they're going to be filled out. They're, it's a very, very doable, very doable to fill them up with tenants. And let's have like a question mark or as a second stage to see if those 10,000 to be proposed in the buildings in the back, are they going to be leasable? The micro units that we say that are 600 square feet, I think it's a nice number for a smaller commercial tenant. So, if you ask me, that's something to be determined in the future, those commercials in the back. But the 18,000 square feet right along the main road, I think it's very, very doable. And with our commercial allies, I think we're going to be able to fill them up.
So, they, so you're going to, your vendor focuses on not only mom and pop shops, but maybe Carrabba's or something like that?
It's, that's, national tenants are very, one of the tenants that we're about to sign is a coffee place that have like 15 all over Florida. So, he does manages larger nationwide.
So, last thing I wanted to mention, yesterday I was in Hollywood for the Florida League of Cities Conference and I drove, actually drove by one of your apartment complexes. I wanted to show the name of it, I can't find it in the book. But, oh, the Nine Hollywood. Yeah, I drove by that yesterday. I was reading this last week and I was like, hey, that's that project. So, that was really kind of interesting that I happened to do that. But other than that, that's all I had. Is there any other questions from the council?
Do you want to?
No.
No?
I have a couple.
Yep, okay, Councilmember Nap, you have it, go ahead.
Thank you. One thing that just kind of dawned on me in terms of amenities or elements and this really kind of applies to both, I think, of what we've got in front of us today. It's great to have public space, open space, accessibility for people just to be hanging out there. Somebody said they might just, they might walk up with a coffee from their house and go sit out at the green space. It's good to have drinking water for both people and their pets. What about bathrooms? Is that something that would dramatically change the outcome of a project to have public bathrooms? Because if you have just a bunch of commercial, oftentimes it'd be like, you know, customers only and then people are kind of stuck.
The commercial building is going to have public bathrooms and they are going to be open certain times of the day and closed at night. But yes, we thought about it.
Very good, all right. And then just one other one. Again, the kind of response is, well, we're more than happy to listen and work with you, whether that be the council, the community, the staff. I guess if you could maybe share a little bit more of the experience that's been going on with the Lake Worth Beach project, how do you envision that process, if you were to be the top-ranked person, how do you envision that process plays out with the integration of feedback from all the stakeholders?
Hello, hi.
Worst chance to speak.
Yeah, first chance to speak. Reynaldo Boron, I'm partner of African American Group, super excited to be here. To your question, you know, the Green Project, it was really, it's really like a special project for us and I think it's the most relevant, you know, similar to this relationship with Oldsmar. So, what we did in that project and we run Facebook ads, you know, to basically do an online survey and an online invitation to all the public, you know, the citizens of Lake Worth. And, you know, it was a very successful meeting where we were able to show the project, to explain our vision and gather information from them. We even, you know, the artist that we bring, he was with us in the event and we present the alternative. And it was like an open vote. So, all was that, we did it in the commercial spaces of the small business owners of Lake Worth Beach. So, all of that integration, you know, it's something that we can definitely apply in Oldsmar. You know, last night, we went to the Tampa Bay Brewery, which is fantastic and is very close to here and we saw a lot of people. So, I think that that type of connection and be able to do, let's say, a pop-up event in the brewery and talk to them because at the end, you know, we're bringing more residents that will benefit, it's a driver for the commercial, smaller business owners of the city. So, all the type of things are, you know, process that we can implement for this project.
Okay, very good.
And then off of his question, does the management company of the apartment complex, will they manage all those events?
Well, we did it ourselves, I mean, they. Well, we did it ourselves. I mean, they.
You're talking about the events?
Like the events in the, in the public spaces. Like if we have a...
Yeah, that's something we need to coordinate with the city as well, because we need law enforcement, we need ambulance, you know, if there is a big event. So we can prepare like a calendar. You know, if you have somebody, a staff that is in charge of public events, we can work with them together and, and plan everything. But at the beginning, it's gonna be us, because we want this to run smoothly.
And we like it.
And then it's gonna be the management company, of course, that is gonna be in charge as, as, you know, the first time is how we're gonna work, and then they do it after that.
Okay.
Ricardo, did you have anything you wanted to add as far as the, the community input aspect?
How do you know?
It looked like you were kinda maybe gonna jump in, so just wanted to be sure.
No, no, because you talk about the community, we all, we also have connections with the mayor of Lake Worth, the commissioners. We have seen, you know, commissioners going and new coming in, so we try to meet them all. Sometimes there are commissioners against and sometimes there are commissioners in favor. So we try to hear why, why the commissioners are against us and why is that? You know, sometimes we can, we can work it out, or sometimes no, and depends on the vote. But yes, our relationship is also with the, with the commissioners and mayors as well.
Very good.
All right. Thank you very much.
And if I may add something, you know, in relation to the Deco Green Project and a reflection of what, how we heard and how we implement what we heard, the Deco Green Project at the beginning, it was a structure and design in three buildings. So we had like an open plaza in the center that we, no, that was mainly the main reason why we got awarded that RFP, because it was an open plaza, open to the public, open to Nord Dixie Highway. However, when we went during the process and the site and approval with the mayor and the, and the commissioners, there was a concern about security, you know, for the plaza to be open. And another concern from the public that the building was seven story at that time. So we shifted and we basically removed one floor of the building and we placed a new building in the, in the front. And instead of having the open plaza, which we believe it was better for the community, but we had a courtyard. So that courtyard, you know, the ground floor of the fourth building, it's retail, and that retail opened up to the courtyard. So right now, that project, you know, even though it's not open, the courtyard, it's a, you know, a space that the public will also be able to use. And, and that's something that reflects, you know, our commitment to respond proactively of what we heard, and we achieved that.
All right. Any final closing statement? You good?
Thank you very much.
You're set. Okay. I was seeing if anybody was motioning with another question. I'm good.
Okay, so we're all good. Anything else you'd like to add?
Thank you very much for this invitation. This is a very involved community. You guys, thank you very much for your time and, and your dedication to read everything that we presented, and hopefully we get it.
You did a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great job. Council can now score the proposal from Office America Group. Pass the scoring sheet to the city clerk once we are done scoring. Also, I think we might wanna take a break. So do I have a motion for...
Do that first and then score back under the meeting.
Yeah, let's take a break and then let's score.
I was thinking do it the other way.
Yeah.
Let's score.
Break.
It's all fresh in my mind. Let's score it.
If we take a break and eat and do all that stuff, then...
And then staff can tabulate while we score.
Thank you.
Or while we take a break.
Thank you, team. Thank you.
Make sure I mark the right paper.
As much as I do love them, they don't love me.
They don't let me eat this when I go to Buffalo. They have a place called Paula's Donuts. They're like huge. And they're so good. Here we go. Okay.
As much as I do love them, they don't love me.
They don't let me eat this when I go to Buffalo. It's called, they have a place called Paula's Donuts. They're like huge. And they're so good. Here we go. Okay.
As much as I do love them, they don't love me. They don't let me eat this when I go to Buffalo. It's called, they have a place called Paula's Donuts. They're like huge. And they're so good. Here we go. Okay.
As much as I do love them, they don't love me. They don't let me eat this when I go to Buffalo. It's called, they have a place called Paula's Donuts. They're like huge. And they're so good. Here we go. Cheers.
All right, we're going to bring this back together. Thank you for all for hanging out and staying with us. Our next item on the agenda is representatives are here from Stansberry. They will present a presentation for 30 minutes. Please come forward and give your presentations. Welcome. You have the floor.
Thank you. Good to see everybody again. Great presentation. We enjoyed it. And we're clearly, much of the public is satisfied already. Because they left. So you guys must have done a great job. So I'm going, I'm John Meyer. I'm principal with Stanberry Marquez. One of my partners is with me. He's going to do the bulk of the work today. But I will get us started with our, our history. We come from a retail background. So the bulk of our development has been retail driven. We've done mixed use as well. But yes, our, our printout is, is here. So we, we really come from a retail background, but we do mixed use as well. The company's been around since 2000, although Mark and I have been in the industry since 90, 91. So some projects that I want to share, the, this is, these are some of the sort of the image views of projects that we've built. This is a very large town center where coincidentally, GAI moved their headquarters. I don't know, in the early, they probably moved in in about 2001 or 2002. They built their own headquarters. So the portion of the project that I'm showing here on this slide, it's in Pittsburgh. It's on the, the riverfront. Each project is certainly adapted, with, with any developer, is adapted to the site that you have. Where the, the residents or consumers are coming from, where the road system is, the infrastructure, what the city wants, what's economically viable, and, and users are satisfied with. So this was an old steel mill site that was, I think it was 100 and, it was either 185 or 225 acres. This was, this was in the late 1990s. And I was the lead partner on, on the project. So you can see that little diamond in the middle is the walkable town center. So cars can drive. They're going to be driving at a very slow rate because of the way everything is designed. And they know that, that the pedestrian is really dominant in that area.
Add a lot of rain for a while, but yeah, ketchup.
Yeah.
But I'm just glad they're out.
Cheers.
Make emotional calls, stack the order.
All right, we're going to bring this back together.
Thank you for all for hanging out and staying with us. Our next item on the agenda is representatives are here from Stansberry. They will present a presentation for 30 minutes. Please come forward and give your presentations. Welcome. You have the floor.
Thank you. Good to see everybody again. Great presentation. We enjoyed it and we're clearly much of the public is satisfied already because they left. So you guys must have done a great job. So I'm going, I'm John Meyer. I'm principal with Stanberry. Marquez, one of my partners is with me. He's going to do the bulk of the work today, but I will get us started with our, our history. We come from a retail background, so the bulk of our development has been retail driven. We've done mixed use as well. But yes, our, our printout is, is here. So we, we really come from a retail background, but we do mixed use as well. The company's been around since 2000, although Mark and I have been in the industry since 90, 91. So some projects that I want to share, the, this is, these are some of the sort of the image views of projects that we've built. This is a very large town center where coincidentally GAI moved their headquarters. I don't know. In the early, they probably moved in, in about 2001 or 2002, they built their own headquarters. So the portion of the project that I'm showing here on this slide, it's in Pittsburgh. It's on the, the riverfront. Each project is certainly adapted with, with any developer is adapted to the site that you have, where the, the residents or consumers are coming from, where the road system is, the infrastructure, what the city wants, what's economically viable and, and users are satisfied with. So this was an old steel mill site that was, I think it was 102, it was either 185 or 225 acres. This was, this was in the late 1990s and I was the lead partner on, on the project. So you can see that little diamond in the middle is the walkable town center. So cars can drive, they're going to be driving at a very slow rate because of the way everything is designed and they know that, that the pedestrian is really dominant in that area. And the shops face on the interior and then in the middle, there's a public park. There's a bridge over the main road towards the, the water that you can see at the top. There's a walkable bridge from the diamond so that you can get to some restaurants with patios that are, that overlook the Allegheny River. To the right is a lot of more mixed use and, and again, this is, this is designed in the late, late 1990s. So a lot of it is very vehicular driven, which fits the site. There really aren't any residents that could possibly walk to this project. So that's the waterfront in Pittsburgh. This is a, an aerial of, of just the diamond of the town center. This project is in Coconut Creek, Broward County, which is, which is, which is near Martin Architecture's offices actually in Florida. And it's a town center. So that sort of U shape in the middle is vehicular, but again, they're large sidewalks. It's very walkable. Stores front on both sides of the streets. In the back that the red building was sort of three sections has office up above. And we built this in, I think it opened in about 2008 or 2009. This is an image of it finished. So that's another walkable town center that, that there really isn't any pedestrian connectivity to that site, the way that city is designed. In the Allentown Bethlehem Market of Pennsylvania, there was, there was a need for a large project and we teamed up with another developer and built a large town center there. It opened in 2006 or 2007. It's called Salkin Town, Salkin Valley Town Center. And it's, it's tough to see from here, but you can sort of see some of the images that it's, it's again, it's like the waterfront, it's very walkable, but it's vehicular driven because there really isn't a town that can integrate and walk or ride bikes to the project. That's a picture of it. Today we're under construction with about a quarter of a billion dollar project that's taken us 10 years in northern New Jersey. It's called the District of 1515. It was, if you envision a suburban office park, kind of a 1970s, 1980s vintage suburban design, everything is, is vehicular access. There's, there's absolutely no way to ride a bike even to this site, not to mention walk. So we are, this town Parsippany, New Jersey, in northern New Jersey, doesn't have a town center and we're building a mixed use town center. It's five, it's roughly 500 apartments and then there's about 60,000 square feet of retail. The front building that's a sort of, it's a sort of a one and a half story, but it's, it's retail only, so it's a ground use that fronts on the street. The, the back of the buildings functionally is on the main state highway that's incredibly high speed and high traffic. It will not look like the rear of buildings. It looks like it's the front. It'll be treated well. And the interior of the project where it faces the mixed use building is where the restaurant patios and the storefronts will be. Underneath the large mixed use building on the other side of that street is, is retail. So we have retail on both sides of that street. That street can be closed off at times. We have a deal with the city that they can have, I think it's seven, seven public events. So if they want to have, you know, an event for the marching band or the state championship football team or whatever, they can have those, those things. We will block off that walkable street. The street is, this is not something really we can do here, but that street is, is designed to be curbless. So once it's closed off, it will actually feel like a plaza, but using a great landscape architect like you heard from earlier, you can create the right environment. So when you're driving your car down there, you realize, you just sense this is where pedestrians are and pedestrians are dominant and so there's going to be much slower traffic. It's also sort of a curved street. So even though we don't have curbs, it's not like cars are going to be in danger of going up on the sidewalk. But again, those are details that you get into later and a great team like these guys have, you know, we figure these things out and this is, this is what we do. So this project is opening and I'll show you some, some information on that later. It's opening the first phase next, this coming winter and the rest of it about a year later. This is just a more plan image of it and you can see the curved street in the middle at the top of the project, that curved, we call it a wounder of the walking street. So that we have big, big plazas, big sidewalks for, for open eating areas and for the big restaurants to have their outdoors, outdoor patios. The apartments that overlook the plaza overlook the retail, some of them have, have balconies and so they can sort of engage and overlook at the activity that's, that's down there on the street and it's in the, you know, on the patios of the restaurants, if there's some live music, they can sort of, you know, engage with that and have some vibrancy there. Of course, we need to control, and this is one of the questions that may come later, but you need, in an environment like this, you certainly need to control how, how it goes, right? Whether it's a neighbor, a neighboring property or your own residence, you have to make sure that the project works for everybody. You can't have, have, you know, a band playing outdoors till one in the morning. And, and we work with our tenants on that. We have big tenant handbooks and rules and regulations and it's just what you do when you're running a, a top end retail project.
This is just the aerial looking down, obviously bird's eye view of the schematic of our project, right? There isn't anything that's particularly noteworthy here. We've broken it up into what we think are digestible portions and we'll just kind of hit those kind of one at a, one at a time here. So what we're highlighting here is the Tampa Road exposure. This project, we felt that to be a main street, it's going to be State Street, right? And so we really wanted to honor that in our design and in the way we oriented the project, but clearly you didn't want to forget about Tampa Road. It's, you know, it's carrying all that traffic. You want those people to realize that there's something in there, that there's something in there for them to go to. So we did that in a couple ways. If we start over on the left, we've, we've affectionately adopted the name Point Park there. If there's anybody from Pittsburgh in here, you probably appreciate that, but so that we call in that Point Park and there's, there, you'll just see in, in our upcoming slide, we have a, we'll have some kind of feature signage there that will call out Oldsmar Town Center or whatever we decide to name it. You'll see a park-like area. It'll be a place for the community to gather. There'll be a, you know, trees and shade and all those other things that you, that you would want, right? Then as you go along, as you go along the main road, a little further to the east, you see that call out in the middle. We broke the buildings there and we broke them on purpose and it's a little bit to be able to give everybody kind of a peek in, right? So instead of just having a big wall or whatever along Tampa Road, all of a sudden they can, you know, as people go by or as if they're sitting at that light or whatever, they'll be able to see into that plaza, they'll be able to see activity going on in there. They'll be able to see perhaps the patio of a restaurant on the end cap of that retail building that'll, that'll be inviting and interesting to them and hopefully draw them in. And then when you go all the way to the east side there at Tampa and Washington, again, you'll have a fountain, a feature sign welcoming, you know, announcing the project to the public and all those people going through, through that intersection there on Tampa Road. And then we've also called out kind of a feature building. We don't know what that building's going to be. You know, that could be, that building could be, that could be a freestanding restaurant. That building quite frankly could be City Hall. It could be any number of things, but it will be a feature building that also will be inviting and welcoming to people and kind of announce a bigger project, right? And these are a couple of the renderings. So you, this is the view down State Street from the, from the west and you can see the park, you can see the wide sidewalks. We call out the State Street parking. You know, you can see a restaurant in the distance with some outdoor patio area that'll be attractive and interesting and hopefully welcoming to people that are coming. This is the view from Tampa Road. It's a little hard, it's a little hard to see. It's a little more clear in the evening shot that we have, rendering that we have, but this is the peek in. So you can see between those buildings there, there's a plaza, there's activity, there's tables and umbrellas and there's things going on for them to see and be kind of interested in. The one other call out that I'll make here is, and we'll talk about this a little bit in the, you know, a little later in the presentation, but over there on the left, we do call for a one level parking structure. So it's ground level parking with a single level of parking above. I think it's important just to call it out here because I think when everybody looks at that, they think of a big parking garage or something that, and I think when you look at it and when you look at it in the context of the design of the project, you see that it isn't really, it isn't, it isn't cumbersome. It isn't, you know, it's, it's, it's there and no one's going to, you know, no one's going to deny that, but it doesn't, it doesn't take over the project from Tampa Road. And then this is, this is the view over at Tampa and Washington. Again, you have a fountain, you have a sign calling out the project. The building that would be built there would be a little bit more interesting than the building we show here for sure. We call out, there's a little dog park along, along the road there that can be located any number of places. We just have, we just, again, these plans are really more conceptual in nature. It's really more to give you guys an idea of how we view a project, how we think about a project and how we think about using this land that you guys have in a thoughtful manner. There, the one thing the public I think kind of struggled with, especially at the open house a month ago, is, you know, they're counting parking spaces and they're, you know, they're trying to do math in their head and they're asking about stormwater detention and all this and, and the one thing that if I said it 10 times, I said it 210 times that night was, the one thing I can absolutely guarantee you as we sit here and talk right now is this will change. That's the one thing, that is the, that is the one thing. It doesn't mean it's going to get overhauled. It doesn't mean that all of a sudden this is going to get turned inside out, but it does, but we will, once we start working with the city, if we're lucky enough to be the ones chosen or our partners, I mean, they said the same thing, right? Whoever you guys choose will work with you, will be thoughtful about it, will bring their experiences with them and work with the, the city, work with the county, you know, you're going to, you know, we'll be working with Florida DOT, you'll be working with stormwater management, you know, be, you know, all these guys. And that will all be thought through, it just isn't at this point, right? This, the next slide, we, this is the next digestible chunk. We're calling out kind of the retail and the public space. So again, we start with Point Park. We come over to the left to the retail building. The one thing that I thought was interesting in the, in John's part of the presentation, again, that retail building, there won't, it won't appear that there's a back to it. There will clearly be a rear to the retail building, but you're going to design it in such a way that this building on Tampa Road isn't going to look like the back of a strip center. It's going to be, it's going to have architecture, it's going to have features, it's going to have different colors and materials and stuff to make it look like something different than the back of your normal retail building. We call out a big plaza. We think the plaza is critical. We love that the fact that it's at the top of Park Boulevard. We love the idea that the fact is that this town center is on the northern part of Park Boulevard and it's like a barbell with Ariold's Park down at the south end, that there's that connectivity there and that's all the community space, right? They, you know, you have the park, you have the boulevard, you have the community area here. That community space, you know, you can see we have a little area in the middle that can be for, that can be for bands, that could be for an art show, that could be, you know, you, or it can just be for, for people to hang out and play or have a cup of coffee or sit down and have an ice cream cone, right? The building that you see kind of above the park or above the plaza there is a retail only building, so that would be retail and restaurant. And then the building that you see on the right, that's kind of a backwards L is, that's mixed use. So that's retail with residential over top of it. Here's the view from Point Park. This is an evening view. Here is the view from Park Boulevard looking up at the plaza. So you, you know, you see the people, you see the activity, the community gathering. And then you can see the retail building there to the left. We aren't, I think, again, I would tell you guys that this is conceptual in nature. The design of that building will be something very different and it will follow whatever your community standards are and stuff and we'll work with you guys on that. The multi, or the mixed use building with the retail on the lower level and the apartments above, again, same thing there. And then, you know, the upper levels of that, of that apartment building, we should, do show it stepped back. The really nice thing about that is that does create natural terraces and patio areas for those apartments and so all of a sudden there's activity on different levels, which is there's something nice to that when all of a sudden you look up and you see somebody looking down over State Street or looking down over the plaza and just enjoying their This is the residential component. The one thing again, I'll mention here, at the very top, we say dog park. The dog park would be for the whole community, doesn't have to be for the residences. It's, it clearly is a residential amenity that the residences who have animals can go to the dog park, but that would be a community dog park. The, you have the two residential buildings, the one that's was, that's mixed use. The other building that we show here, at least in this, in this concept is strictly multifamily. And then we have the residential amenity space kind of behind it between the building and the, and the parking structure there. Again, I know it came up a bit this morning and that residential amenity space has to be residential. Like you can't have, the, the dog park can be shared, the public space, the plaza, Point Park, that can all be shared amongst the community. But when you have a apartment place, that really has to be their, their space. They have to have, and that's some of the attractiveness of apartments today. They've actually gotten, apartments have gotten a little bit smaller and they have more amenity space so that the people that are living there can actually spend more time in their community space together, whether that's grilling out or by the pool or reading a book outside in a hammock under a tree, right? But they do need, that's part of what you, I, what we certainly want and I would believe you guys would want as well is, these are residents of your community and you want them to come in, you want them to participate, you want them to be really integrated in your community. Well, for that to happen, you have to provide them space that's attractive to them to, to want to live there, right? There we go. So that's the plaza again. This is the view down State Street. Again, you can see the wide sidewalks. We call for some landscaping along State Street. We love the parking on State Street, by the way, that's already exists because that parking just naturally will help slow traffic down. The more you have cars backing out, pulling in, doing all that, it just causes people to just drive a little bit more carefully and slowly, which is, which will be critical to, to this project for sure. And then the last, the last chunk that we have here is the parking. So you can see the big group of parking we have. It isn't visible to State Street. We didn't really, we wanted to try to mask it as much we could, as we could, so we wrapped it with the residential and retail buildings. Again, it's a single level, so it isn't a big, big obtrusive, you know, a building that sits on Tampa Road. That's the main, that's the main crux of the parking. You have entry points into that from Washington and also State Street. So if there was ever a time that we want to have a farmer's market on Sundays here or you wanted to, I learned a lot about, at the open house, I learned about, a lot about second Tuesdays and third Thursdays and fourth Fridays. And so I don't still understand a lot of what that is, but clearly it's the community getting together. And if you wanted to block off State Street from Park Boulevard down to Washington, you, you know, make that more pedestrian friendly and then have that tie into the plaza and into the community space, you could do that, right? So we love the State Street parking and then obviously you have a little bit of parking over here in the, in the lot here where council chambers are. So, and that's all in addition to the parking just that you have throughout the community. And so I don't still understand a lot what that is, but clearly it's the community getting together. And if you wanted to block off State Street from Park Boulevard down to Washington, you, you know, make that more pedestrian friendly and then have that tie into the plaza and into the community space, you could do that, right? So we love the State Street, Street parking and then obviously you have a little bit of parking over here in the, in the lot here where council chambers are. So, and that's all in addition to the parking just that you have throughout the community naturally. Again, there's the parking structure you can see on the left-hand side of what's the mixed use building. There's the view down State Street, again, just calling out the State Street parking there. And then that brings us to our wrap-up and I'll hand it back to John. Okay, I'm gonna wrap it up. So, so anyhow, we appreciate you guys having us. We have all, had an interest in this project, as you know, for a long time. We think that we are very qualified to do the work. We know how to work with the city. We've worked with many of them over the years and we've worked in, with cities in many municipalities in many states over the years, whether that's New Jersey or New York or Pennsylvania or Florida or else, Ohio or elsewhere. This is our project again in New Jersey. It's under construction right now. There's a picture of it. This picture is probably a month and a half old or so. But, we didn't get the video. We have a little, we have a little, no. We have a little, that was gonna be a little drone video for you, just showing you that. But, but that's the project, that's the project in New Jersey. Again, mixed use, 498 apartment units, a little less than 60,000 square feet of retail space, which is restaurants, retail, health, fitness, and a hotel. So with that, I will say thank you. Oh, okay. Yeah, we're fine. So with that, with that, we're happy to, happy to answer questions that you might have.
No video?
Apparently no.
Okay.
You guys, I'm sure they can provide the video, but it's a, it's, it's a wonderful video.
All right, we are gonna have questions. Thank you so much for your presentation. Great job. We're gonna start out with Councilmember Knapp.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mark, for being here. All right, some of these questions are gonna be from similar to what I asked the first group here, but then a little bit different based on your presentation as well as what was provided. The first thing, just listening to your presentation, you mentioned that this 1515 project has been 10 years in the making. How much of that 10-year period was with direct involvement with your organization versus like how much of that was like build up? Kind of similar in vein here, this is like a project that's 20 to 30 years in the making, but obviously you're just there now into the picture now.
No, we, we get to, we, we get to, we get to say we're, we are full of all 10 years of that project. So, yeah, so the reality is, is development in New Jersey is very, very burdensome, as I'm sure you've heard and everything else. You mix into that the fact that there was a, a case that went to the state court about affordable housing that basically froze the marketplace for a year and a half because no one was gonna approve any apartment units in any municipality in that state while that affordable housing litigation was going on. You, we effectively then took about a year, year and a half delay with a mayoral change that happened in the middle of it. And the second mayor ran on basically, I'm not him, so vote for me. So he wasn't gonna just rubber stamp everything that, all the work that we had done with the previous administration. And then obviously COVID hit and that set you back. So New Jersey is burdensome and it takes a long time. But, but, you know, perhaps it would have been a seven-year project instead of a 10-year project, who knows?
Sure, okay. Thank you for that explanation. So you, you kind of also then in your presentation and the lead-off there, might have been John, kind of have more of a strong background with just mixed use or large-scale retail projects. Besides the 1515, like what else, you know, how, how experienced are you where there's that residential component, where it's the full broader spectrum of mixed use?
So we have, we have experience with mixed use. Coconut Creek had some mixed use, not residential, it had office, right? I would tell you that we, much like our project in New Jersey, that we were, we're the ones that John and I and our partners and our investors secured the land, took down the project, started working through approvals. Once we got to a point, we brought in a, a partner who is a residential developer and construction company that was local and out of the area to assist us with that. We don't, we have, we have residential experience. We certainly don't have, I can't point to 15 projects that we brought.
Sure, okay. And then kind of in addition to that, a lot of the projects, or at least several that you presented, were kind of much larger in scale compared to, to opportunities here in Oldsmar. 1515 is probably fairly close. Is that kind of also true relative to the residential mixed component question of you, you have some experience there, but maybe it's just not super wide in terms of projects of smaller scale such as this, that in terms of acreage?
Now, I, look, at the end of the day, I think the one thing that John said is, was very much the case and that is every project is its own, right? It's like your kids, right? They're all unique in their own way. And so you, you tailor it to what it is. And if we thought that this was just too small to be able to do something meaningful, we wouldn't be here in front of you today. It's a funny piece. It's not, you know, it's, it's a polygon, it's an odd shape and it isn't the easiest space to work with. But it, but it's a really signature piece of real estate and it's exciting. And so I think we can, I know we can do it justice.
Well, and when, when we count usable acreage, if, if you asked usable acreage, what's your average, I'd say this is in the ballpark. It's probably slightly on the lower end, but I don't know, maybe a third of our projects have been this, that, that, the, the district at 1515 is really 12 usable and what we showed was maybe eight or nine because there's a hotel and detention base in behind. So from an acreage standpoint, this is in the ballpark. It's just a question of, of density.
Great. As far as, this was same question I had asked the first group here. How critical is the component of being able to fulfill the commercial space in terms of the overall success or feasibility of the project?
It's, it's, it's huge, right? So the, the, the thing that happens, so the residential and the retail component, when done right, they, they, they play off, there's a synergy there that makes both better, right? And just think of it, do you wanna live over a, do you wanna live over a retail plaza that's kind of half-baked and maybe half-empty and has a bunch of shops kind of coming and going?
We already have that.
Right? You don't, you don't, you don't want that. You don't like, it's not, it's not, or do you wanna live in a place where, where it's, it's more interesting, it's active, it's, right? And I think that's where our retail background serves us well. In that, you know, when, you know, when you, you will sit there and you'll come up with, you know, we'll come up with the retail space, we'll lay it out and whatever that space is, cause that will change, right? So if it's 25,000 feet or 35,000 feet, we'll say, okay, are we doing two or three sit-down restaurants, right? With patios. Okay, that's 10 to 15,000 feet. Okay, then we want a handful of quick service food, right? You wanna make sure you have active space all day parts. So at the beginning of the day and finishing up the evening. So you want to be able to have the yoga studio or some other boutique exercise place and a coffee shop for people to go, or a bakery to go to in the morning. And you want lunch, you want shopping. And then at the end of the day, you want the people to be able to unwind, listening to some music or just enjoying some company with some friends or watching the game, right? You want the family to be able to come up with their bikes and have an ice cream cone, whatever that is. But that's the critical nature of developing that retail, is making sure that you have all three day parts going. Cause that's really when a project, when a project becomes successful and meaningful. If you guys think of the places that you like to go, think, my guess is the places that you go most often, other than convenience place, other than publics, right? Are the ones where you have a reason to go there more often, you know? Oh, they have a bookstore there. Oh, they have that great coffee place, I love going there. But yet they have that great restaurant we love going to on Thursday evening with our friends and a few things in between. And that's what you want. You wanna give the public more reason, not less, to come to your project. So the retail component is really pretty important.
Okay. And then on that topic of the retail.
If I can add.
Oh, go ahead.
I think what one, the thing that attracted us to this property and to your project is the town center nature of it. And, 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 you know, a town center or a downtown is really people interacting. And retail is sort of how we interact, right? You walk around, you get your ice cream cone and you have sort of a reason to, to go there. And part of it's having that public gathering space as well, right? But the retail attracts people and it also allows you to build, build nice space. It justifies the economics. So for us, the retail really legitimizes everything. So if, if you can't build great retail here, then you're really just gonna have multifamily, which I'm sure you're in, you're in the Tampa market, right? It's gonna be fine, but it's not gonna be the vibrant place. That for the past couple of years, we've been watching all, all your videos, we've come to many of the council meetings. We appreciate, you know, hopefully all of, all of what we've heard and what's been said, but it, it's really based on that retail interaction. So we really feel retail is probably the most important piece to be done right, positioned right because of all the things that it provides. And the multifamily is important too. But so, so, so retail has to be good, it has to be great.
Okay. And then also then on the topic of retail, just to make sure I understand the plan correctly and clearly, the building at the corner of Washington and State, the southeast building, building number four, however we wanna call it, that has no retail, that's currently presented, correct? It's just strictly residential?
Currently that's, currently that's residential.
That, that's, that's all I needed to know on that one. Then as far as accessibility goes, walkability a little bit and the way your layout is right now, it appears kind of all the parking is basically centered on the deck or under the deck. And I'm just trying to envision the accessibility piece or the walkability over to the plaza and the retail, is there?
You'll have, you'll have.
Be a breezeway or anything?
Oh, of course, yeah. You will absolutely have a walkway that'll take you out that end of the garage. And with a, and there will be a breezeway in the mixed use building for sure that will carry people from that parking structure out to the plaza.
Okay, yeah, I'm just thinking like the straight.
Yeah, no, you're walking like this all the way around.
Okay, perfect. And then finally, as far as that flex building goes, and, and Mark, you mentioned how there, undoubtedly the, the one thing that's, that things will change, right? As specifically with that building, how much could, whatever could wind up there and changes to it impact the potential success of the project? Cause in the past, there's been other things where, well, if the height changes, you know, just it's volume and size at a single story, whatever the square footage is of it, how much could that change to where it could negatively impact the project?
I don't, I don't know. That, that building, I think, I think that building, the one thing that you want there and it's, you know, there'll be a balance here, right? But you want that building because of its location and the, a number of people that are gonna see it on a daily, weekly, monthly basis. You want that building to be a little bit of a statement building, right? And so from that standpoint, what is in the building, you want something, you want to be active, right? Cause that's, cause again, you're at the front door, you wanna see activity. So, but whether that building, whether that building is retail or restaurant or is office or, you know, what have you.
Medical.
Government building maybe, I don't know. But that, you just want to be active and you want that to be a bit of a signature building, right? Other than that, I think, I, I, I don't think that that building is, is gonna make or break the rest of the project.
Okay, so, so kind of its use, I would say is more TBD than really how the general volume that you anticipated taking up. Okay.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Cannon?
Oh, boy. Okay. Yeah, they're double-sided, sorry. Okay, um, you know, I'm gonna kind of jump around just because we kind of were on the topic of retail. There was, at least it appeared to me, there was very purposeful build-out of the team that y'all have associated to this project. This is the part where you nod your head, yes. There you go. One person in particular that was interesting to me was Ms. Ferrelli, the, the retail consultant. And the reason that that was important to me is that a lot of our residents, as you mentioned, are looking for something else. We, you know, we, we have, you know, we have lost control sort of of a building that turn, is condo, right? So it's owned, there's nothing we can do about it. We can't put anything in the downstairs, we can't, you know, necessarily lease it. And it's really hard to get anything going because there's, you know, a lack of residents there and there's not much to go to. So the, there's been folks that have tried to move in there and then they struggle and then, you know, you try to get them to hang on as long as possible, but it's, it's really hard. So when I saw her resume and the St. Petersburg project at, that Skytown specifically, I saw the opportunity to create that mix that you're talking about. Because I think that our residents are concerned with more retail, more opportunities for them that are also appealing to the folks who are gonna live in these buildings. And less concerned with, you know, I don't, you know, wanna see a bunch of buildings. Does that make sense? Is that the role that she will fulfill? I wanna make sure I'm not assuming what her role will be. Is that the role of this, this particular person on the team?
Well, I, Mark's gonna answer the question, but I, I think you need to go back and talk about your background.
Yeah, so, so I would be the person fulfilling that role on our team.
Okay.
And with Willow and her team's help.
Okay.
So that's what I've done my career, right? And that's how we met. 25 years ago. They were building the project, I was at the time representing a national retailer. We did a deal together. Then we did two or three or what have you and that was that, right? So, but that's what I do. I've done, I've been on the tenant side for multiple tenants. I've been on the landlord's side for multiple landlords, institutional, big, small, what have you. And now we're partners and have been partners for the last 10 or 11 years, right? But that's, that's what I do. I'm the, I'm a leasing guy at my, at my core, right? I have relationships throughout the business with restaurants and retailers and what have you. In a project like this, it is, it is critical that you have a local partner. We happen to know ACRE, we know them well, we know Florida Retail Partners well, we know Ripco well, we know all the players in the, in the Tampa community well. What I, what I, what I like about ACRE and this particular project is they've done similar work and they've done it all over. They're leasing a project that isn't completely dissimilar. It's not mixed use, but in Apollo Beach. They're doing work in downtown Tampa. They have projects that they've done in South Tampa. They have projects that they do over at the beach, you know? And, and they're a really good thoughtful group and they understand, they understand mixed use and they understand the merchandise mix. And so the way that we end up working is I run that role for, that's one of the responsibilities I have for our team and our investors. And I will, I'm, I'm, I'll be in town all the time and, but they'll be our boots on the ground. It'll be the, the one saying, oh my gosh, there's this great restaurant, Mark, can you fly down and meet with them? 100%, when do you need me? Next Tuesday, okay, I'll be there, right? And we're down and we're interacting, we're on the phone constantly and we're constantly working towards getting that done. So it's a team effort.
Okay, gotcha. The, I saw that you considered walkability not only in the site, but also to Ariold's. That actually was the subject of a USF student project on how to, what, 20, 15, 20 years ago? On how to connect those pieces. Another area that we'd love to see connected is the library and creating a sort of circulation. Do you think that you have included enough of a public area to, to make that golf cart drive or walk worthwhile to get up here?
Yes. Now, over time, what our hope would be, as I would think would be yours and the public's quite frankly, is that this project will be really the big springboard towards reimagining State Street. Cause State Street has so much potential. towards reimagining State Street. Because State Street has so much potential, and it just hasn't been realized. And it's been, hasn't been realized for a lot of reasons, and I could go into them. It would take way too long. But just on its surface, if you think about the buildings across the street from this land.
Yeah.
Now, most of them aren't retail. It's, I think, some doctors' offices, a little bit of office space, what have you. But they're facing over to nothing, right? Like, you need, you need, that street needs to be double-loaded with activity kind of on both sides. And so hopefully, this project is really a shot in the arm towards getting a little, the city for sure, but also the building owners and the community and stuff to really give State Street a little bit of a boost. You guys don't have the natural infrastructure that a Dunedin has or that a Safety Harbor has here, but it can come. You have the street. You have, you have the roadways. It can be, it can be, it could be really cool and unbelievably quaint and somebody, and something that somebody's bragging about 20 years from now, for sure. But it's going to take a while. And this project, I think, needs to be the jumping-off point for that, because it's the most significant of all that property on State Street. But it's going to be up to the city, and it's going to be up to the other building owners and stuff to help create that connectivity over to the library. That'd be awesome. But you have a lot of privately-owned lots between here and there. So there's going to be, there's going to need to be thoughtful, some real thoughtfulness in how that moves forward into the future.
I saw that, and I, I don't know who pulled this picture, but that was meaningful to me. I saw a couple other things that are unique elements to kind of create a sense of place and similarity. For example, the paved sidewalks, the brick buildings, even showing the massing sort of directly across from, I saw this, that's us right now, right here, right? From this view. Can, can we use some additional, I think there one, there's one view that showed some crepe myrtles, but can we use some additional landscape opportunities along State Street to kind of continue to buffer toward the residential side? Because on, on the opposite side, you have Washington, but Washington does turn residential on that side.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yeah, you, there's a lot of, there's a lot of treatment that we would work on providing with, and you guys, right, on State Street, right? That, it, State Street can absolutely be softened. It can be softened by landscape. It can be softened by trees that have a nice, you know, a canopy at a certain height, right? That will help provide not only shade, but just bring everybody's eye level down a little bit and, and, and make it a little bit more enjoyable, a pedestrian area, right? So, yes, so all that can happen. You might even want to at times take, you know, there might be a couple places where you'll pinch State Street a little bit again, just to make it a little more pedestrian-friendly and to slow down the vehicles just a little bit more. And I don't know that the vehicles, maybe they do. I, when I say I don't know, I really don't know. I don't know that the vehicles race up and down State Street. Clearly, we've heard about speed bumps and speeding and not stopping at stop signs, you know, and stuff. I don't know if that happens on State Street or not. But to the degree that it doesn't, that's great. And to the degree that it does, you have to have some thoughtfulness there as well to really make this a pedestrian-first kind of area, and not to not be able to let people get to their house and get to work and get to school. But you really want this to be community space, which means with a beautiful little community like this and a project that is connected to the community, you want it to be walkable. You want it to, you want people to be able to ride a bike or bring their golf cart or what have you, you know?
The parking garage facade that faces Tampa Road, in order to make that a little more compliant, could that be wrapped, for example, in murals from local artists? We see, this is very popular around here. I'm sure you guys have seen, almost every city now has like their own little set of cool, beautiful murals. Or perhaps you have a better idea to, to wrap that so that it's not, it doesn't, I mean, right now, it doesn't look parking garage, but it does have to be wrapped in something.
So you'll have landscaping there, right? So you will have trees and landscaping, and you'll be, need to have the trees too, if that, who knows if that's actually where a dog park goes. Again, we just wanted to represent that we're thinking about these things more than that has to be the location. But you'll have landscaping there for sure. And you can certainly treat the side of that with, in, in interesting ways, whether that's, you know, there, there's absolutely treatment for the side of that. It could be really cool banners that the, you know, that the city uses, right? It could be, you can, you know, whether it's a mural or not, I don't know exactly how that would work. But you, you would certainly, you would certainly look into that, and we would, this, you know, we would work with you guys.
Yeah, that's a discussion. Do you want it to stand out, or do you want it to go away?
Right.
True. That's a good point. Well, maybe we ask the public what they, what they would want. One of the projects that your counterparts had worked on, the yard at Ivanhoe, was particularly interesting to me because it is built right, right-abutting Orlando neighborhoods that are very similar to what we have right here. Can you provide me some details about integrating, whether it's retail on your side or your partner's ability, to integrate new development and that massing into these residential homes? That, I mean, some can, could see this from their front yard, some couldn't, but I, I want some feedback on that.
Well, there has to be some scaling, so some setbacks of building heights, like Office America talked about, where, where it's, you know, it's all relative to what's across the street and what's a half a block away. But ultimately, there's, there's a, there's a conflict there. So we just have to figure out how it works together. The, the yard is an interesting project. Have you, have you visited?
I have not visited it, but I visited it on Google Maps and Google Street View extensively in the last two weeks because I just, it was, it was one of the projects that was in, in the submission. And when you get down on the ground level, you see on one side, you know, this courtyard and this plaza and, and, you know, a definite area for public space. There's some residential amenities there, too. But on the opposite side of the street, there's, there's like these little bungalow homes that don't look that different from what we have on Washington and on Park. And so I was, I was just wondering, you know, how's that working out for you?
I think it's a great example, and it's, it's a wonderful project. It's pretty amazing what they did on that site and how they integrated the retail, and they have the courtyard and everything. I don't think they have this property. You know, they, they, they don't have the, it's sort of in the middle of a little community, but this was an old industrial
Right.
sort of wasteland. And so they don't have the advantages of being able to draw from a broader community for really strong retail and, and sort of semi-regional retail customer draw. But the flip side, that's, that's interesting, and it must be in the city of Orlando proper because the scale is insane. I, I can't remember how tall the building is, but they have a pool on the top, and it's probably six or eight stories. And it's right next to, on a two-lane little road, these one-story bungalows that are on a, on a pond. So it's, it's not really the scale that you would shoot for with this site.
Right.
But, you know, they, they did their best. And I actually think that if, if you go there, it's, the people in the bungalows, you know, if the traffic is properly managed, meaning the residential customers primarily coming out of the back, which I, I think is how it is, the people in the bungalows probably aren't that disadvantaged. They get to walk now to some nice retail.
Yeah.
You know, to some, you know, public plazas and where there's some activities and such. So, so, you know, there, there's, there are some advantages of it. It's just the scale is pretty shocking. So if you put the little guy down on, on the street in Google Earth, and you look up at the scale and at these tiny little.
I mean, it was interesting to me, though, because similar to what we have here, they're right on Orange, what is it, Orange Avenue, Orange Boulevard, I think, Orange Avenue. Sort of like we're next to Tampa Road, which is really busy. And so it's kind of hard to get people to pull in here, which was, you know, one of the things I liked was that peak, the, the look-in from Tampa Road that I thought could be an interesting way. And I also appreciated that on Park Boulevard, the people who live on Park Boulevard actually could almost see straight through to Tampa Road still. So they wouldn't necessarily be faced with, you know, a giant building, other than the, the retail building that you have marked as number three, which is shorter, right?
Yeah, it's single-story.
The narrative portion of your submittal talked about, let me find the page, a safety component that was interesting to me. Just one second, let me find my page. And it talked about keeping an operations team to continually assess and identify potential hazards to avoid blind spots and to keep public areas clean and well-maintained. Speed humps, signage, and markings, et cetera, et cetera. Is that something that, like the project of 15 in Parsippany continues to have? How long do, does that entity stay, stay on? Like, would the city of Oldsmar continue to work with that entity to keep it clean, to keep it safe?
Yeah, you'd have a management team.
Yeah.
You have to have, with retail, any retail, you have to have a really engaged management team. And it's more active than, say, a normal strip center because you're running different promotions and activities. So, you know, it's just, it's just what you do, right? Make sure your project is safe. Make sure it's viable. And so you're, you're always tweaking the project, whether it's signage or lighting, whether it relates to sort of the negative, so the spillover lighting. Let's say your lighting experts got it a little off, so you tweak that. But let's say there's not enough lighting in, in an area that, that needs to, to be better led. So, but it applies to landscaping. You need to keep your landscaping top-notch. So this is, this is sort of what you do when you're running a good retail project.
And the nice thing about this project is you have the retail component, but you also have the residential component. So you can have a management team. There's plenty of management teams that can manage both, right? I've, I've been part of a team that's had been a part of projects like this in many different cities in the country. And they are not only keeping the residents happy and making sure that the residential community is operating smoothly and safely and, and with the, and that things are clean and stuff, but they're also managing the retail. Your manager of this facility and their assistant manager will know all the managers of all those stores or restaurants. Like, they'll be, they'll be integrated into the community, and they will also be, they will also know you guys. Maybe not you guys individually, maybe, if you choose. But they will know the city, because you'll be, always be constantly coordinating things. If you're going to have, again, if you're going to have the school come and have the band out in the plaza, that's going to get coordinated. The city's going to be a little involved. The school's going to be a little involved. The property owner's going to be a little bit involved. And we'll have, there'll be onsite, there'll be an onsite team that will, that will make sure that all that's happening.
And would that apply to that, the flex space on the corner of Washington and Tampa Road, that, that building that you've kind of said it should be like a statement building?
It would apply to the whole project.
Okay, so that could be co-managed, for example. Vice Mayor's previously talked about performance groups locally that need space for either the performance or rehearsal and stuff like that.
It could be. We'd have to figure that out. But yes, absolutely. And that's a little bit, that, that space in the middle, the plaza, to the degree that it's weather permitting or it's something that can be done in an evening. You could, that's what that space is for, right? But if, if, if it, if we need space that needs to be enclosed, we'll have to, we'll have to talk about that, right? I mean, there are financial considerations there, if it's public space versus rentable space, right? But.
Do you count in the 71,000 square feet or 1.6 acres of the public use, you had a mathematical calculation on a chart in your submission. It doesn't have a page number, but I'm sure you know the one I'm talking about. And 20% of it is, so in other words, 20% or 71,000 square feet would be public use amenities. But wouldn't the food and beverage, retail and flex space on the other side also be part of that?
We didn't include it because we didn't know what, again, we, we aren't going into this with a preconceived notion of what that building is.
Understood.
In the original RFP, you guys wanted three uses, right? So that means there has to be retail, there has to be residential, and then there has to be, it can't be hotel when, understandably so. So that really takes you to office, because it's not going to be industrial, right? So that building could be office. You know, we could put office elsewhere in the project as well, but we just, so that building, we didn't, we didn't nail that down because we think that'll be something that we'll end up working with you guys on a bit.
Okay. So it could potentially fall into the public use side. It could potentially fall into the, the residential amenity side, or it could fall into like a retail or office? Hopefully more retail.
Yeah, I, I think it, I don't, I think it's unlikely that building ends up being part of the residential portion. I think it's more that that ends up being office or, or some type of retail use would be my guess.
Because that would be like a flag, like you said, a flagship kind of.
It's location, you know, right there on Tampa. You know, a lot of visibility. Easy parking with the parking right behind that building.
Yeah, okay. I saw a lot of local experience from, is it your architect, Baker Barrios? The, are they engineer or architect? I can't remember.
Architect.
Architect. So they have the Nova Southeastern at the Causeway and McMullen Booth over there, and Robles Park Village, and then, what was the other one? Oh, and the engineering group has worked on Gas Works in Tampa, Heron, which is a water street in Tampa, 101 Meridian, which is a water street in Tampa. So there's a lot of local experience there. I wanted to find out if you guys had previously worked with them, or did you find them by reputation? Or is that just someone that you've, not, unless it's not picked out of a phone book, but what, how did that, how did that relationship come to be submitted here together?
Well, we, we've been, we, we've worked all over the place. The last six years now, maybe, we've been coming down to the Tampa Metro and Orlando because we wanted to really focus our energies here. We, we, we didn't think the New Jersey project was going to take another five years after that, to, after that decision to start construction, but, but it did. But the reason why is Florida's got the growth, we're enjoying the warm weather a little bit more. But also, we, we just think it's a better environment for us to work. And you can sit in front of city council, you can work with staff, and it's a, it's a two-way communication, and you can sort of figure things out. So we've been spending a lot more time down here. We own one property in Seminole that we're redeveloping. We own a property in Orlando. And so the property in Orlando has the potential for a, a massive redevelopment. And the city of Orlando has already zoned it for a large mixed-use project. So we, it's a shopping center. It's a 50, 60-year-old shopping center that we purchased about two years ago. So in the early planning stages, we hired Baker Barrios to help us with that project. And so that's how we met Baker Barrios. Separately, Bowler, the engineering firm, we've worked with from time to time because they're, they're in many states. And they're engineering, well, they're looking at other projects for us, but they're also engineering the property in Seminole. So, you know, we've done some work with both of these firms. We haven't done big projects with them, but we have enough of a sense that these guys know what they're doing. And we've built teams in every market we've gone into. We, you know, typically with Civil, for example, you, you don't go, you don't, you don't take your Civil team from Columbus, Ohio, where I'm from, and take them to every market, because it just doesn't work that way. There are local regulations. There's county, there's state, there are relationships. So you really need to figure out how to evaluate the right team, no different than Mark spoke about, about the, you know, retail brokers, that we've been working on the relationships with the last five years, whether it's doing deals or his just simple evaluation of creating relationships and realizing who's the right team for this project.
So when you decided to use them, obviously you worked together to put this submittal together, even though they're not here today with you?
Right.
So there's a, okay.
Yeah, we're, we're the, we're the principals, right?
That's why, okay.
And we have a couple partners, right? And our team has, I don't know, 150 years of experience, and only, it's shown in our hairstyles, right? But, and again, to John's point, you know, we've worked with, we've worked with Bowler, we've worked with Langen, we've worked with, you know, all sorts of different engineering firms, we've worked with various architecture firms. And I think in this particular case, we had done some work with Baker on our project in Orlando, where we'd done some schematics of that. It was, it's, the hope is that that will be mixed-use, retail with residential, parking structure, some other things, and we really liked them. We liked our engagement with them, we liked their thoughtfulness, we liked the expansive experience that they had had throughout, all over the place, they're a really big firm, but throughout central Florida. And asked them if they would get involved in this, and they said yes, and, you know, Bowler much the same.
But the developer really just brings the team together.
Right.
And depending on what market you're in and what type of project, and who the local team might be, it changes from time to time.
Okay. Okay, let me just double check here. That's all I have right now.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you. You can tell I went first last time because I don't have as many questions.
And I really appreciated your questions.
I tried to mix it up.
But it's helpful.
Mix it up.
But I was, I'm like, cool, I don't have to ask, I don't have to ask. One question, Mark, you went to John Carroll?
I did.
So did my brother.
All right, he must be a good guy.
Well, you...
You don't have him.
He's the oldest of five, I'm the youngest, so you can fill in the blanks. He's a very good guy, very successful, all you John Carroll people, like, all the GMs in the NFL, they're all from John Carroll. Now that you guys care, I'll talk to you sidebar, maybe. So one thing we didn't bring up, I think we tried to, with the brick buildings that, or Councilmember Gannon had said, but in terms of the history, it's just part of the visioning, I know that it was mentioned in your narrative, but is there anything in particular that, when you were going through that process, that was considered, hey, we want to make sure, like, in terms of the research of the history? Like, the founder of Oldsmar was the inventor of the Oldsmobile.
Right.
It's a very big deal for all of our residents. So was there anything in particular like that, or at least in any sort of brainstorming session with the team, that you guys thought, well, maybe we have to have a more modern development course, right?
Right, right, right.
But they really want this history piece to be a part of this thing, too.
So, we have talked about that, right? We have it, and we've talked about that, I mean, look, you see the cover of the thing, right? We've talked about that with the expanded team as well. But, again, a little bit, yeah, I think our counterparts here brought up earlier, there's only so much you could do until you're awarded the project. But absolutely, you'd get into that, your city seal isn't lost on us, right? We understand, I mean, the connectivity of, hopefully, you know, what can be Ariold's Park, up along Park Boulevard to a plaza that can be, that can be community space. We certainly thought through that, right? How that gets developed will be, will involve conversations and stuff, you know, there might be, there might be something particularly important to you guys or your constituents that you want as part of this project. It's what we do, it's what, it's what these guys do, right? And so we'll work with you on that. The project that we, that we're doing in Parsippany, if you are familiar with Stickley Furniture, it was a big furniture company out of, out of New York and New Jersey a long time ago, well, they, they were, they had furniture, they were big in this area. And so that was important to the city of Parsippany, that there was some tie to Stickley Furniture. So, when you look at that project, you'll see it's a lot of earth tones, you know, there's some, there's some wood structure within the exterior of that, the signage has kind of taken that into account. Our sign out in the front on Route 10 takes some of that, those design elements into account. It's what we do all the time, it's what these guys do all the time, so of course, yeah.
Yeah, and just, and with the visioning statement, and I saw how you addressed it again in your narrative, how you're just, you know, line by line, trying to figure that stuff out. But it's those questions, I think that's why they're kind of similarly themed across the diocote, where it's just like, okay, we just want to make sure that that was read, digested, and even though we understand it's gonna be a mixed-use and residential, these other factors, we just want to make sure that they're understood.
Of course.
The density incentive, was it 250 residential units was the initial plan?
Mm-hmm.
Are you gonna need to utilize density incentive if you follow through the code, and do you know by how much, if you have to?
We don't know that at this point in time. We haven't done that level of analysis. We stuck to the very basic, the very basis, we, you know, we made sure our building heights weren't, weren't too high, we tried to follow to the best we could the ULI shared parking model, which we're familiar with, because that's the model we follow in our project up in New Jersey. We tried to make sure we accommodated for the setbacks and all the basic fundamentals of what you guys had provided us in the RFP. Clearly, there'll be, you know, if we're the team selected, clearly there'll be a deeper dive into that.
Okay.
And whether we need, whether we need that or not, the density bonus, I'm not sure at this point.
Okay, understood. Okay, so we've got the active uses for, I'm gonna address that, resiliency and sustainability. How do you incorporate those into your other projects? How do you expect or anticipate it to be incorporated here due to our proximity to the water?
Yeah, so, you know, it's interesting, I think the, I think the sustainability for this project will really, you know, look, you, because, because of your proximity to the community, you know, you're clearly, you're going to have, you're gonna do things, simple things, bike racks, right? You're, people are gonna actually bike here. They're like, as John was saying, our project in New Jersey sits on a road very similar to Tampa Road. There's nobody biking to that, right? But here, you could scooter, you could bike, you could bring your golf cart, right? So there'll be some very basic sustainability things there. You'll have the plaza, you'll have green space and stuff. And then, and then beyond that, it's really just, it's really just providing a well-designed, architecturally sound, you know, project that can kind of grow, hopefully, with the community. And those are all things we'll work on with the city, but that's really that.
Okay.
Oh, and then, yeah, and then the stormwater piece, you know, I'm not, John's not a stormwater expert, nor am I, and, but luckily, we know people who are, right? And so, much like we're having to deal with stormwater issues in our property in Seminole that John referenced, we'll have those issues here, and you're, they're gonna, they're gonna make you design to 100-year flood standards.
Right.
And so the project from a stormwater issue and a detention issue, there will be, nobody's gonna come in here and do anything on your guys' property that isn't meet all regulatory issues, particularly in the state of Florida where that's such a sensitive issue. How that, how that impacts, it won't, this project don't have any negative impact on the rest of your community. How the rest of your community deals with some of the ongoing stormwater issues is really a community issue, not a development issue. The thing you guys can, can know is that this project, it will have to stand on its own, and that those, and those, any stormwater and retention, detention issues will have to be solved for relative to this project.
Sure, and I mean, that, the question comes up all of the time.
Yeah.
And it's, but everybody who lives here wants to know, it's like, has anybody thought about the water? And it's just, yeah, we thought about it, well, what's gonna happen? It's like, well, we don't have anything, there's nothing there right now. So how can we figure out what we're gonna do with the water if nothing exists yet? So it's, it's almost answering it in the abstract, right? Well, what's traffic gonna be like? I don't know, there's nothing there yet, right? But we're gonna have to try to figure that out before we move forward. And I think that's just to articulate that clearly, and especially, and thank you to both teams for answering those questions and letting us know, hey, those are difficult questions to answer, this is what we've done in the past, that's why I was trying to pose those questions, that way I think my colleagues were doing the same thing. And, to be honest, Councilmembers Gannon and Knapp asked everything else, so thank you, Mayor, thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Grimes.
Received the answer of the rest of them.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Just one quick question.
Oh, but can I just say, this is Sandy's last meeting.
It is.
Last one.
Last one.
Hello?
Hi. Hi, Mark.
See you later.
This'll be the greatest question she's ever asked.
Does he?
No pressure.
Way to tee it up.
Here we go.
Ow.
You can make a motion.
Thank you. Goodness. It seems like so frivolous a question now, thank you.
Well, I'm teasing.
I know. Construction, he touched on that it'll be an MNC, Masonry, sorry.
No.
Is yours similar, or are you considering some frame, all block?
We'll determine that at all. I think we were, I think we were anticipating it being frame construction, but again, we'll go through a process on that and determine, and determine, you know, what is the best to provide the product that we, that we want to provide.
Yep, that does have a direct impact on the cost, obviously.
Yeah, it definitely, it definitely has a, there's definitely a cost impact, for sure, but there's also a sustainability impact, right? Yeah, and it's always a balance, right?
Right.
Is it finding, you know, finding, you know, building it, building it properly and building it for the long term, you know? You know, we, the shopping centers that Stanbury owned or first built 20 years ago, we don't own any longer, but we owned them for years and years and years. And then when, at an opportune time, we decided to sell them, because we wanted to take some old partners out of the equation and repurpose that money into new projects such as this, such as the one we're doing up in Parsippany and stuff. But, you know, those projects were projects that we held for, you know, 14, 15, 16 years. And so, you know, I don't know what this project will have in store relative to if we're selected, our ownership and how long we don't. We love the prospects of owning real estate and projects in Florida longer term, certainly, right? But that'll all, that'll all be determined, but we always are looking to build with sustainability in mind because we might, you know, we may, hopefully, we're the ones owning it in 15 years.
And again, consideration, as I spoke earlier, about the flood.
Right, of course.
It could be elevated a lot, you know, less expensive than a masonry building could versus a frame structure, but it can be elevated and help, again, with the elevation and rating and so forth.
And we'll, and again, we'll go through that analysis, for sure.
Just something to keep in your head. I won't be here, but...
Be here, just not up here.
That was an excellent question. Excellent question.
Thank you. I just have a couple, couple questions, simple. Building number four, apartments only.
Yep.
And that is for the privacy of the residents, I just want to make sure that that's correct. We don't want to have any retail at the bottom.
Look, we will figure that out. You'd love retail along State Street, but without retail across the street or restaurants across the street, that, that's a, that typically isn't an equation that works real well, single-loaded retail on a street.
It's not working out.
So, and it also then depends on demand, right? So you definitely want that plaza to be filled and active, and we feel very comfortable that we can fill all the square footage, so it's around that plaza, and then it L's over to where the entrance is to the parking garage on State Street, right? So there is a little State Street fronted retail there. I don't know that we can go farther than that today, but we may, we may learn over time that there's more demand than we realized, and that would be the natural extension of it. But today, we're showing a residential-only building.
Okay, and then, like, Councilmember Knapp answered the questions on building five, the flex use. So do you know Colin Brandley, Sandia, Patty?
I do, I know them well.
I've known them for 25 years, they're, they're a great retail organization.
They are.
Yeah, and I'm glad to hear that you work with them.
Yeah, yeah, Sandy is one of my favorites.
You're special people.
For sure, I mean, they're really...
Yeah, my wife and I have known them for a very long time, when you brought that up, I wanted to bring that up. And then the last thing I want, another thing I want to bring up is Councilmember Gannon brought it up. I attended the CRA class 101, and Owen, you were my teacher. And if you remember, you told us, you told us to go to the yard.
The yard at Ivanhoe, the one...
And we all went, and the, we got in an Uber, a bunch of classmates decided to go, and I wanted to tell you, like, actually after the, that night, I called Felicia immediately. That building was incredible, it was, like you said, it was nine stories.
Yeah, it's big.
But what's so amazing is the Tampa Bay Lightning, we're in the playoffs, and my goal was just to get down there, have dinner, and watch the game. We got there probably, we left class at five, we left right away, you told us to go. We got in the Uber, we got there, a bunch of us got in there, we got to a place, and within an hour, that place was packed.
Yeah.
So I was so intrigued that I actually started asking residents, you know, rent 1,700, 1,800 a month, they love it because there were so many different restaurants. The containers, there were container buildings that had pizza shops, ice cream shops, all kinds of different shops. So, after we had dinner, there was like five different restaurants in there, if I remember. Am I right? There were like five?
Yeah.
And they were just, everyone was packed. We went across the street because what Councilmember Gannon said, there's these little bungalow homes across the street. I was just like intrigued to go see these homes, so we actually got out of there, we took a walk down blocks and blocks, and she's right, it's kind of like this neighborhood. It actually was.
How did it integrate? Like, how, what was the feeling when you...
The feeling was the neighbors, like, Mark mentioned, I think the neighbors enjoyed it because they could cross the street and they could go to lunch, or they'd go to dinner, or to the pizza shop and fix something up.
It didn't feel like, I'm genuinely curious now, like, it didn't feel like you were going from one world to a totally different world when you crossed the street, it all worked?
It actually did not, it did not feel like that, and that's why I mentioned at the beginning, I called Felicia immediately, I said, Felicia, I just was at this yard, and it was just so populated with all the residents from the apartment building and all the restaurants, and outside they had a brewery, if I remember, that we went out, because we had a beer, they had a brewery, and everybody had dinner, then they went outside to the courtyard, it was a huge courtyard, and they had a brewery. And I was really intrigued with that.
Yeah, the good news for you, the good news for this property and for the community is, this site is much more, it, it, look, again, I'm not an architect and somebody's gonna, you know, say, Mark, you're all wrong, or, which I hear all the time, but usually from my family. But this site is a little, is easier to integrate than that project, too.
Really?
Because of Tampa Road. Tampa Road is a mammoth road, where that yard, where that, where the yard is, those roads are, the orange is a meaningful street, but it's not like, it's not like Tampa means, like, I mean, it doesn't, so, so...
It was a train track.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is, this property, you, you need to focus on the state and then work from there, and it gives you a very clear direction, whereas some projects, all of a sudden, you've got two or three, or even all four sides, that you have to worry about how it's gonna integrate into a community. And that's tricky, that gets really tricky. You always have kind of a primary corridor or street that you work off, and you go from there, but when you, when you have, when you literally have neighborhood all around you, that gets really challenging. And so to that end, Tampa Road is actually, from a, from a design standpoint and functional standpoint, it's actually quite a help in this, in this process. And not that you want that looking like a big wall, you certainly don't, but you don't, but you, it really allows you to focus your energy onto the community and the State Street and beyond, and then work from there, and not, and you have to make sure Tampa Road looks nice, and you don't, and it's thoughtful, which it will be, and will be whoever does the project. But it does make it immensely easier than I think they had it at the yard.
Wow.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring that up because I thought that was very interesting. The thing I did not like about that project, it was that, it was, that building was just so tall. It was, it was mammoth, and I thought that was a little over jealous, I mean, it was just, it was just so tall. But the residents, I talked to several residents, because I actually wanted to learn... But the residents, I talked to several residents, because I actually wanted to learn because of Owen in my class, and they basically said they loved living there. They loved the convenience, they said. It was easy to get around, it was easy for them to get to work, and it was easy for them to move around. So I wanted to share that. Other than that, I have no other questions. Everything else was covered by the other council members. I want to thank you guys for doing a great presentation and believing in our city of Oldsmar and coming here. I really do, I'm grateful and thankful. Before I close it, yep, Councilor Nap's. Yep.
Surprise, surprise. Mark, you had touched on, and I had asked the first group as well, as far as, you may not know what the future holds in terms of once a project's done, it's developed, it's been built, it's now being currently managed. There's, obviously, there's all sorts of decisions or factors that go into whether you keep or sell it. But can you give us an idea of when and if a property does get sold? Who are those types of owners that usually acquire it? Is it just kind of real estate investment? You know, who ultimately, and there's no bad answer here, but just.
No, 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 no. So this, so this property, this property could absolutely be, be bought by any number of publicly traded real estate investment trusts, for sure. I mean, at, the number of units will, will, that'll impact that a little bit, you know? And what I mean by that, if it's, if it's, if there's, if it's too few residences, then the national, then the bigger national publicly trade companies may say, as much as they love Florida or whatever. And then you're going to deal with more regional and local, you know, guys who are effectively doing the same thing. Depending on, depending on the size and, and, and that, you might get, you might get some institutional money. You know, Ohio State Teachers Pension Fund is a big investor into real estate. So we, we, we don't necessarily work with them directly, but we've come across them a lot, right? Utah State Teachers, Calsters, or just California, you know, they invest in a lot of projects like this. So it could be private group, it could be, it could be a public company, or it could be an insurance company or whatever to hold in, in, in their portfolio.
Cool.
You're gonna have, it's, it's a large project, right? It's a 50 to 100 million dollar project. So you're going to get either a very large private owner, or you're going to get some private equity group that's funded by pension funds, and they're going to make sure that their, their investment grows.
Sure.
Right? And that's not by having something go to waste. One, one interesting example, I think, Mark and I love coming here. One of the reasons is, is when you look at the Hyde Park project, you know, that, that thing wasn't that great for that long, right? And so here, you had a turnover, you had a phenomenal group, some of our friends out of Boston, who are a small private development company. They're bigger than us, but they're not huge. They're, they're not, you know, any, you know, that much bigger than either of these groups. And look what they've done the last, how long have they owned that thing?
15 years.
15 years, yeah. So they bought this thing and they completely have transformed it in the last 15 years. So it's not all bad when the original owner does pass it on, because, you know, you get some new investment dollars, you get some new visions, some leases turnover, which creates opportunities. So it's, it's, you know, I, I think people get scared when projects get sold. But, but I, I think there's also opportunity in that.
Well, and, and much like, much like Office America Group said, is when, when projects like sell, the fact is, the owners know it, the buyers know it, and people in the business know it. Very few people just outside of that community, I mean, you guys would know it because you're, you're share, you're stakeholders in the city, right? But you're, but, but you're, the management team is likely going to remain, right? Your, your property manager, your assistant manager, your marketing person, you know? And more times than not, they stay with the property. And so really, when it comes to the public interface of that property, you don't, you don't tend to notice it as much as you might think you would.
Sure. And thank you for elaborating on that, because I think that's beneficial for everybody to hear is, kind of, the, the instant reaction is, oh, it's sold, and there could be something bad around it. And it's, it's good to hear that. And then just finally, ask this with the first group as well. Could you either share your experience or how you would envision, if being selected, how the, the process trying to keep the public involved with tweaking or getting to the best state of the project could be in the future, or for the design?
So what I would, what I, you know, look, we, there'll be, there'll be a whole development agreement, there'll be work done, there'll be a public process to that. We will, if we're the group selected, we will spend a lot of time in these chambers over the next number of years, working through that and listening to constituents come up and maybe like what we're doing, maybe not like what we're doing, right, or what we're proposing. And then that's really going to be the work that we are going to take on with you, right? And your planning and building department and that. And we really, this was one of the things that was hard at the open house, and I'm sure you guys ran into the same thing, you know, the, the public is so passionate about what they want or what have you, and they're saying, well, half of this should be a public park because we own it. And I'm like, okay, but, you know, and I, you know, you walk through that, right? But I, you know, that wasn't what the RFP suggested. We responded to an RFP detail. You know, that's really, that's really something that you need to take up with the city, not with us. We, we only can respond to what we're asked to respond to, and more not, the, the members of the public were understanding, and if they took the time to, to listen, they actually turned into a fairly engaging conversation, which is what you want. But we'll really count on you guys and the planning board and the building department and stuff to really make sure that we're addressing all of the issues that are important to your constituents.
Sure.
Hey, I have.
I'm, I'm done, so.
I am also done.
So Exhibit 1, I asked this to the other, the other client. You have a, a thing on Exhibit 1. February, you got Valentine's Day. August, you got Italian Festival. July, you got Ice Cream Soul. You've got a whole list of public events. Is that going to be managed by the apartment complex? Is that who will run these?
The onsite management teams. I wouldn't call them the apartment complex, because it'll be our, it'll be, it would be the onsite manager, assistant manager, whatever that team looks like.
Florida retail partners, whatever it is.
Because they're, because you're doing that for, you're doing that really, I mean, there might be, there might be events that they hold for just the residents of the apartment, but what we're really talking about are events for residents of the community.
Good.
Right? And so whether that's, whether that's the farmer's market, or whether that's concerts, you know, a school concert, or whether that's acknowledging the, the softball team that just won state championship, or whatever it is, like, that'll be, we'll have an on, we'll have a, a local team that will help coordinate and manage.
The Plaza program.
Right.
Okay. Thank you very much. Great job. Oh, yes, go ahead, Councilor Gannon, go ahead.
And I'm, I don't know if this is against the rules, but I actually want to ask it to, sorry, make both rules. Given, given the projects that you're currently involved in, do you have the financial and, you know, I'm not sure if you've got families back home, but do you have the wherewithal to take on this project next door? Given that you understand now the importance that we put on it, that our community puts on it, is that real, and I'm going to hold you to this. Is this, is this something that, is that timeline realistic? Is that something that you can promise to us, that you can commit to this project?
Yeah, 100%. So the good news is here, is you saw that, we didn't get to show you the video, but our project, our project up north is, is well under construction, right? That will be, that will be a fully stabilized project in the next, I don't know, 16, 18 months, right? At that point in time, it's kind of running itself, right? It's, it's doing its thing. Our involvement, our involvement, quite frankly, our involvement even right now is much less than it was, because we have local construction managers, that, our partners that we partnered with locally do manage the construction of that project. I'm involved from a leasing standpoint. John and Brandon are intimately involved in a lot of other ways, as is our other partner, Mark. But our involvement there is lessening kind of by the month. Our project in Seminole isn't that big, and we're kind of turning a corner there, and that redevelopment should be done here in the next year, 12 months. And so it's actually a good time for us. And so, so from a, from a, from a bandwidth standpoint, we absolutely, it absolutely works for us. The timing works for us. And it's the type of project that we know we can knock out of the park.
Okay. And even though he's sitting, Mr. Hernandez, can I, can I ask you the same question, given the mix of the, the projects that you have going right now that are, you know, in progress? You know, does your group have the bandwidth to work on this project in the way that we need that commitment level?
Yeah. Well, nobody is going to say no, so.
Sorry, CEO.
I know you're not going to say no, but.
Of course he's not going to say no.
On a video camera right now, and.
Well, let me explain.
Who will watch this meeting and want to hear that commitment.
Yeah. Legwork, we're going to be ready next year. First quarter next year is going to be delivered. So we turn that over to the management company. Millennium is a condominium, so as soon as we finish one building, we turn the condominium to the condominium association, so we don't have to manage that project over there. And we have the capability, the architect, at the beginning, is the more involved in the process, including the architect, the engineer, and the landscaper architect, they are here. They, they have time to start this project next year. So we, we do have the time and the commitment to, to make it happen.
Thank you. Thank you for indulging my out of order.
No, that was a good question.
All right, thank you very much. Next, council will now score the proposals from Stanbury Development Group. And when we're done, please pass your scoring sheet to the city clerk, once you're done.
Absolutely.
With everyone?
Let me just think for one sec.
Thank you.
Well, that has to go into the, 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 the tabulation.
The what?
That number, just to make sure.
Oh, 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 oh. Sorry, I have a hand writing. Sorry about that.
Andrew, is it being a 30? Is it being a 30?
Yeah, about that.
Excuse me, do we want to recess? Well, they're tabulating.
Remotes?
Volunteer for this in here.
I know.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to, to recess for 10 minutes.
All right, I have a moment. How about a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Recess for 10 minutes, please. We are going to move to item number four. Finance staff will now open the price proposals. Administrative Services Director will read the price proposals into the record. Cindy, come on up.
Hey, Cindy Nano, Administrative Services Director. This is Garrett Zealof, Finance Administrator.
Finance Administrator.
Okay, here we go.
Are you literally taking it out of the envelope?
Yeah. You didn't wanna do this.
That's what we.
You know what? I wanted to, I wanted, okay. Fair, all, okay, in all fairness, in all fairness, I had to eat my words.
Okay.
I had to eat my words, and yesterday, Felicia, as my witness, I said Laura was right about keeping the price in the envelope. And you could take that home with you today. Rare occurrence.
All right.
Go ahead, Cindy.
Hey, drum roll.
The price still being in the envelope.
I love the ASMRs, that's great.
Okay, Office America Group. Purchase price, $2 million. Two zero 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 zero.
All right.
Closing 24 months from execution of the purchase and sale agreement.
Mr. Dan Gray Group, still being in the envelope. Should've brought my envelope opener.
Okay, Stanbury Development Group. Financial consideration, $2 million. Two zero 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 zero.
Wait, what?
Two with six zeros.
They're the same?
Yep, they're the same.
Hey, I've got five bucks in my pocket.
Laura is giving me that face like Katie, I told you so.
So Katie, ultimately, it didn't matter if it was in the envelope or not, right?
You do get some.
That extra hour you kept us here about the envelope discussion.
Do you wanna take another quick res- quick another.
How long do you all need to?
Are you ready to go?
We just have to enter the information into our spreadsheet, then we'll calculate the final numbers.
I think we should keep going.
Quietly sit amongst ourselves and make faces.
Just save a few minutes, right?
Yeah, just a few minutes.
Okay, motion for a seven-minute recess.
Ooh, yeah, second.
Very specific.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. We're in a seven-minute recess.
Make use of your time.
Welcome back. I call the special meeting back to order. It is, it looks like it is five minutes after two. City Clerk Kristen Garcia will now read the scores into the record.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Soraki, I will start with Mayor Soraki's scores for Office America Group. Architectural scale, 7.5. Complimentary architecture, 7. Street presence, 9. Unique or site-specific design, 7. Tampa Road interface, 6.5. State street interface, 9.5. Public access and connectivity, 8. Pet friendly, 8. Walkability, 9. Accessibility, 9. Community event, 8. Safety, 9. Lighting, 9. Landscape, 9. Hardscape, 8.5. Cost of construction, 8. Construction schedule, 9. Mix of uses, 7. Location of uses, 7.5. Feedback from open house, 9. Experience of lead, 10. Qualifications of lead, 10. Prior project examples, 10. Prior project funding, 10. Public sector experience, 9.5. Experience of team, 9.5. Qualifications of team, 9.5. Prior project examples, 9.5. Total points awarded by Mayor Soraki to Office America Group, 242.50. Point fifty. And I will start with Mayor Soraki's scores for Stanbury Development Group. Architectural scale, 9. Complimentary architecture, 9. Street presence, 10. Unique or site-specific design, 10. Tampa Road interface, 8.5. State street interface, 9. Public access, 9. Pet friendly, 8. Walkability, 8. Accessibility, 9. Community event, 8.5. Safety, 9. Lighting, 10. Landscape, 9. Hardscape, 8.5. Cost of construction, 8.5. Construction schedule, 8. Mix of uses, 9. Location of uses, 9. Feedback from open house, 10. Experience of lead, 10. Qualifications of lead, 10. Prior project examples, 9. Prior project funding, 9. Public sector experience, 9.5. Experience of team, 9.5. Qualifications of team, 9.5. Prior project examples, 9.5. Total points awarded by Mayor Soraki to Stanbury Development Group is 255.0. And we will now move on to Councilmember Graber's scores for Office America Group. Architectural scale, enassing, 5. Complimentary architecture, 4. Street presence, 3. Unique or site-specific design elements, 4. Tampa Road interface, 2. State street interface, 4. Public access, 6. Pet friendly, 7. Walkability, 7. Accessibility, 6. Community event, 6. Safety, 7. Lighting, 7. Landscape, 7. Hardscape, 6. Cost of construction, 7. Construction schedule, 2. Mix of uses, 5. Location of uses, 6. Feedback from open house, 6. Experience of lead, 8. Qualifications of lead, 8. Prior project example, 6. Prior project funding, 6. Public sector experience, 7. Experience of team, 7. Qualifications of team, 7. Prior project example, 6. Total points awarded by Councilmember Graber to Office America Group is 162 points. And I will now read Councilmember Graber's scores for Stanbury Development Group. Architectural scale, 7. Complimentary architecture, 7. Street presence, 7. Unique or site-specific design, 6. Tampa Road interface, 6. State street interface, 5. Public access and connectivity, 7. Pet friendly, 8. Walkability, 8. Accessibility for all ages, 6. Community event, 7. Safety, 7. Lighting, 7. Landscape, 7. Hardscape, 7. Cost of construction, 6. Construction schedule, 7. Mix of uses, 6. Location of uses, 7. Feedback from open house, 6. Experience of lead, 8. Qualifications of lead, 8. Prior project examples, 7. Prior project funding, 7. Public sector experience, 6. Experience of team, 8. Qualifications of team, 8. Prior project examples, 7. Total points awarded by Councilmember Graber to Stanbury Development Group is 193 points. Councilmember Knapp's scores for Office America Group. Architectural scale, 6. Complimentary architecture, 8. Street presence, 7. Unique or site-specific design, 7. Tampa Road interface, 1. State street interface, 8. Public access, 6. Pet friendly, 5. Walkability, 8. Accessibility, 8. Community event, 6. Safety, 9. Lighting, 9. Landscape, 6. Hardscape, 7. Cost of construction, 10. Construction schedule, 8. Mix of uses, 10. Location of uses, 8. Feedback from open house, 7. Experience of lead, 8. Qualifications of lead, 8. Prior project examples, 7. Prior project funding, 6. Public sector experience, 7. Experience of team, 9. Qualifications of team, 9. Prior project examples, 5. Total points awarded by Councilmember Knapp to Office America Group is 203 points. 203. Councilmember Knapp's scores for Stanbury Development Group. Architectural scale, 7. Complimentary architecture, 7. Street presence, 7. Unique or site-specific design, 6. Tampa Road interface, 7. State street interface, 8. Public access, 6. Pet friendly, 8. Walkability, 8. Accessibility, 8. Community event, 6. Safety, 9. Lighting, 9. Landscape, 6. Hardscape, 8. Cost of construction, 10. Construction schedule, 7. Mix of uses, 10. Location of uses, 8. Feedback from open house, 6. Experience of lead, 9. Qualifications of lead, 8. Prior project examples, 7. Prior project funding, 6. Public sector experience, 6. Experience of team, 8. Qualifications of team, 8. Prior project funding, 5. Total points awarded by Councilmember Knapp to Stanbury Development Group is 208 points. Two zero eight. Councilmember Grimes' scores for Office America Group. Architectural scale, 7. Complimentary architecture, 7. Street presence, 6. Unique or site-specific design, 7. Tampa Road interface, 5. State street interface, 5. Public access, 8. Pet friendly, 6. Walkability, 6. Accessibility, 6. Community event, 6. Safety, 8. Lighting, 8. Landscape, 7. Hardscape, 7. Cost of construction, 7. Construction schedule, 5. Mix of uses, 8. Location of uses, 8. Feedback from open house, 7. Experience of lead, 7. Qualification of lead, 7. Prior project examples, 6. Prior project funding, 7. Public sector experience, 6. Experience of team, 6. Qualification of team, 8. Prior project examples, 7. Total points awarded by Councilmember Grimes to Office America Group is 188.0. So 188. Councilmember Grimes' scores for Stanbury Development Group. Architectural scale, 7. Complimentary architecture, 8. Street presence, 7. Unique or site-specific design elements, 7. Tampa Road interface, 6. State street interface, 6. Public access, 8. Pet friendly, 6. Walkability, 7. Accessibility, 6. Community event, 7. Safety, 8. Lighting, 8. Landscape, 7. Hardscape, 7. Cost of construction, 6. Construction schedule, 6. Mix of uses, 8. Location of uses, 8. Feedback from open house, 7. Experience of lead, 8. Qualifications of lead, 8. Prior project examples, 8. Prior project funding, 9. Public sector experience, 9. Experience of team, 8. Qualifications of team, 9. Prior project examples, 9. Total points awarded by Councilmember Grimes to Stanbury Development Group is 208 points. Two zero eight. Councilmember Gannon's scores for Office America Group. Architectural scale, 7. Complimentary architecture, 3. Street presence, 4. Unique or site-specific design, 3. Tampa Road interface, 1. State street interface, 6. Public access, 4. Pet friendly, 3. Walkability, 3. Accessibility, 7. Community event, 6. Safety, 5. Lighting, 8. Landscape, 8. Hardscape, 4. Cost of construction, 6. Construction schedule, 5. Mix of uses, 8. Location of uses, 7. Feedback from open house, 6.6. Experience, 4. Qualification of lead, 4. Prior project examples, 2. Prior project funding, 6. Public sector experience, 4. Experience of team, 6. Qualification of team, 4. Prior project examples, 2. Councilmember Gannon's total points awarded to Office America Group is 136.6 points. So 136.6. Councilmember Gannon's scores for Stanbury Development Group. Architectural scale, 9. Complimentary architecture, 10. Street presence, 9. Unique or site-specific design, 9. Tampa Road interface, 8. State street interface, 8. Public access, 9. Pet friendly, 9. Walkability, 10. Accessibility, 7. Community event, 10. Community event is 10. Safety is 9. Lighting is 9. Landscape is 7. Hardscape is 9. Cost of construction is 7. Construction schedule is 6. Mix of uses, 8. Location of uses, 9. Feedback from open house, 5.9. Experience of lead, 9. Qualification of lead, 9. Prior project examples, 8. Prior project funding, 9. Public sector experience, 7. Experience of team, 10. Qualification of team, 9. Prior project examples, 8. Total points awarded by Councilmember Gannon to Stanbury Development Group is 236.9. So 236.9. The total weighted scores. So the total weighted score for Office America Group proposal is 34.603883. And I'll repeat it. Office America Group total weighted score is 34.603883. And the total weighted score for the Stanbury Development Group proposal is 40.233017. And again, I will repeat it. The Stanbury Development Proposal is 40.233017.
Thank you very much. Counsel, I'm looking for a motion to accept the rankings as scored.
So moved, second.
I have a motion in the second, is there any discussion on this item?
Do we want Kristen to read them off again?
No. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next, City Manager Felicia Donnelly will explain the process going forward. Thank you, and Felicia, you have the floor.
Good afternoon. The process going forward. Before I start with that, I want to say that there is a seven-minute video on YouTube that explains the process for anybody watching. Thank you, Jordan, for interviewing me for that. So, the development next steps are on August 27th. It's your next regularly scheduled council meeting. There's an item to consider authorizing the city manager to negotiate with the top-ranking preferred developer. So, that's coming up in a week and a half. After that, I'll start negotiating with the negotiation team. And then, since any of the conceptual plans are going to require adjustment, I'll bring back another conceptual plan before we really get into the details, if any of that needs adjusting, to meet the Tampa Road corridor requirements, for instance. If that's approved, we continue negotiations. At this stage is when the developer really starts complying with all of the, you know, the detailed items. So that's traffic analysis, stormwater analysis. All of those things start to get developed. Once we meet the development terms, the item comes back to the council for approval. If the council wishes to proceed after the development terms are presented to council, then we host three more public open houses to gain more public input on the proposals. After those open houses are held, I will bring those back with the development terms and the public input for another round of public open houses. If that's approved, then the city council then directs the city attorney to form all the legal documents. You all have seen an example of that with the Devon-Rashnall project. I think I counted over 100 pages, so they're quite lengthy. If that's a... After the city attorney develops the legal documents, then it goes to the planning board for another public meeting, and then it comes back to the city council for two more public hearings. That's just to get a development agreement approved. And so, that is all in our land development code at section 14.7. So, thank you.
All right. Counsel, do we have any comments or anything else before we adjourn this long meeting today? All right, we're all good?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, a second. Thank you all, counsel. Great job today. Thank you, staff. Thank you both. Both of you, great jobs today. It's been a long day. We really appreciate it of you all coming out. Thank you so much. Meeting adjourned.